To convene now for the briefing on reimagining public safety, the update of the resolution, preliminary assessment of Training Academy. When we're done with this presentation, we'll go back into the executive session to continue on the personnel matters. Manager, let's see here, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, sevens, or still missing five people. I don't know if you want to ready your staff to jump on?
I think AV is moving some people over. It's like a few of your colleagues have also joined, which is great.
Uh huh. Looks like we have Kathy and Vanessa. I think we have a critical mass now. Manager, if you want to start.
Thank you. Well, Mayor and Council, thanks for the opportunity to provide a briefing this afternoon as part of the city's reimagining public safety process and an update on Resolution 66. As you know, this was originally scheduled for February 16th, but the weather event canceled that work session, and I certainly appreciate the flexibility of our presenters to make this new time work. I'll note that there are three documents and backup on this item, the February 26th memo from Kroll Associates titled Preliminary Assessment of the Austin Police Training Academy, as well as the presentations you will see today from Kroll and the Austin Police Department. We certainly have a lot to get through, and I will first pass it off to Farah Musketin, our Director of Office of Police Oversight, and also the project manager on this work, to frame the conversation and then to introduce our consultants. I want to particularly thank Director Musketin, as well as Deputy City Manager Nuriyoberbera Vandermine, who have been leading and very engaged in this work to ensure we have a training academy that reflects the values of our community. With that, Director Musketin.
Thank you, City Manager Crump. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Farah Musketin, Director of the Office of Police Oversight. I'm pleased to be here today with you to introduce our consultants from Kroll and Associates. Just briefly, as just a refresher, obviously, council passed Resolution 66 back in December 2019, and we've been working very hard to get this comprehensive assessment of APD started. At the direction of the city manager, we broke down the components of that resolution and instituted a phased approach. In Phase One, the phase that we are currently in, it is an assessment of the Training Academy and also use of force and public interactions between the community and APD. Today, you will hear from Kroll on their preliminary analysis of the Training Academy. With us today are three of the consultants that are part of the team from Kroll and Associates. They include Mark Ellers, Rick Brown, and Dan Linsky. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to them to present to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Farah. I just want to check to make sure you can see all of us, as well as Rick, Rick and Dan.
I can see you and Dan, not Rick yet, but he may just need to turn on the screen.
Okay. Rick, can we hear you? Are you, can you, are you there?
Yes, I can hear everyone. I just, I don't have video for some reason. I don't have a video icon anywhere on here.
The bottom of the screen, so you start, stop video.
Let's see if this does it. There we go. I was looking in the wrong spot, sorry. Technically challenged.
Rick, why don't you lead us off by introducing yourself, and then we'll go to Dan, and then to me, and then I can go over the part of the presentation.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. As Mark said, my name's Rick Brown. I spent a little over 29 years with the Pennsylvania State Police Department with over 4,600 sworn members and 1,900 civilian personnel. At the end of my career, I had executive oversight of a variety of functions that tie right into what we're doing here in Austin, areas like internal affairs, discipline, our diversity efforts when it came to recruitment, community engagement, EEO-related issues such as discrimination and harassment in the workplace. Also had oversight of our Bureau of Training and Education and our five regional training centers. Lastly, before I left, I was overseeing the department's five-year independent bias-based policing study with the University of Cincinnati Policing Institute. I retired in 2010 and served on, so for the past 11 years as a consultant, I've been on independent monitoring teams in Oakland, California, in Detroit, Michigan, Niagara Falls, New York, most recently the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office in Phoenix, Arizona. And these consent decrees that I was involved with, my subject matter expertise involved overseeing and checking for compliance issues related to their complaint process, processes, internal investigations, discipline, use of force, and their reviews by their command and supervisory personnel, to make sure they were in compliance with court orders. Lastly, I'd just like to mention, I was a member of the Department of Justice investigative team of the Baltimore Police Department, their patterned practice investigation. My role in that investigation was to assess the Baltimore Police Department's use of force, and I was also a technical advisor to the superintendent of professional responsibility on all of their accountability process for the Puerto Rico Police Department, which at the time had 17,000 members. That led to a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Justice for comprehensive police reform in handling police misconduct. So that's my background in the snapshot, and thank you for your time, and appreciate being here.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Linsky. I'm a recovering police officer. I spent 28 years with the Boston Police Department. I'm now seven years outside. I actually have conversations with my children now, as opposed to interview and interrogations with my children, so I'm slowly getting out of my old role. I was a real cop, I like to say, for 18 years, where I worked undercover. I bought drugs, guns, did search warrants, was on, I was a hostage negotiator, SWAT teams, and did all of the stuff you see on TV. Then I became a boss, and I did PowerPoints and meetings for a number of years. I ran the uniform division for BPD, was in charge of the community engagement strategy, and my, one of my proud moments is getting a bunch of cops out of cars onto the street to do walking beats, to engage the community in conversations, before there was an event or an issue. I became the chief police and spent five years as the chief of the Boston Police Department. My most commanding event, I was in charge on Marathon Day during the Marathon bombing attack on Boylissah Street. I was responsible for getting folks out of there as quickly as we could and tried to save as many lives as we could, and oversaw the investigation for the BPD, wound up 102 hours later with the terrorists in a gun battle in Watertown. My wife and I decided that that was enough of law enforcement for us. I retired, started my own consulting group, got a couple contracts with Department of Justice. I went to Ferguson, Missouri after the Michael Brown shooting to help try and figure out what happened there, and how we could prevent that in other locations and fix what was going on. Did a lot of work for the United States State Department, training our partner nations, they are law enforcement agencies, in setting up police accountability practices and police training practices. I'm a passionate trainer. I became an instructor in the academy after seven years on the job, taught at law enforcement academies throughout Massachusetts. Since leaving BPD, I have taught at law enforcement agencies in 44 states and 13 or 14 countries now. It's my honor and privilege to be here, and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Rick. And good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Ellers. I'm a managing director at Kroll. I'm in our Philadelphia office, and I'm acting essentially as the engagement leader for this, for this project with the City of Boston and the Austin Police Department. Just by way of background, I have been with Kroll for 14 years. I have done many internal investigations, everything from workplace misconduct, allegations of sexual harassment, discrimination, to fraud and financial improprieties. I've done a lot of work with state and local governments and police department investigations and reviews since I've been at Kroll, also do a lot of work in the Title IX area with universities and colleges. And prior to joining Kroll, I was an Assistant U.S. Attorney for 18 years. I started out in Washington, D.C., as a prosecutor there for eight years, doing primarily the local street crime prosecutions. I spent about half my time in the rape unit and then the homicide unit there. And then I went to the Eastern District of Pennsylvania and Philadelphia, and I spent 10 years as a federal prosecutor and eight years in the organized crime strike force. So we're very happy to be here today, and what I'd like to do is, if we could, I was told I was going to be able to share my screen, I don't know if that's possible, so I could share the PowerPoint that we have. I don't have the share function at the moment, however.
Our AV folks should be able to bring it up, just one moment.
We've just given you permissions.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I am, all right, can everybody see, see the screen?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. So what we'd like to do is just kind of run through over the next 20 minutes or 25 minutes, kind of a high-level summary of what is in our memorandum of February 26th, our preliminary findings and recommendations related to our assessment of the Training Academy. Before I get into that, though, let me just tell you just a little bit about a few other members of our project team. So you've met Rick and Dan and myself, but we also have two kind of academic consultants working with us, Dr. Robin Engel, who's a professor of criminal justice at the University of Cincinnati, and she's the director of their Center for Police Research and Policy. She's been doing this for over 25 years, and she's an expert in bias-based policing, and she's working with us on best practices with respect to the Training Academy, as well as will be heavily involved with us in Phase B of this project as we, as we move forward. Dr. Cassie Fields is a human capital expert. She's particularly astute at recruitment and promotion strategies and removing roadblocks and bias in hiring and promotion, works with a lot of public service agencies around the country. And then we have two community engagement advisors that we're working with, Larry Mays, who's like Dan, based in Boston. He's done a lot of work in the civilian input of police investigations and reviews. He served on their community oversight panel of the Boston Police Department. Currently, he's the Vice President of Programs for Catholic Charities in Boston. He's a former cabinet chief for the mayor of Boston, was chief of human services there for a number of years. And A.J. Bingham is our local Austin point of contact, and he's helping us with community outreach and is essentially our liaison to the Austin community on this project. So just briefly, the project objectives of this assessment, consistent with and essentially directed by Council Resolution 66, we are assessing the Training Academy's ability and readiness to prepare cadets for policing in a diverse city consistent with best practices and to seek a transformational police academy that addresses racial and gender equity, emphasizes de-escalation, and moves away from a strictly regimented paramilitary academy to a true adult learning academy. Now, this is obviously preliminary assessment, so let me just give you highlights of the work performed to date. We have examined a series of independent reports concerning various aspects of the Training Academy. These include the SWAT analysis by Dr. Sarah Villanueva, curriculum review by Dr. Miguel Ferguson, the report of the Equity Office Assessment, the racial inequities analysis by Joyce James Consulting, and the reports of the Community Video Review Panel. In addition, we've conducted interviews and meetings with over 45 stakeholders, including department leadership, academy instructors, former cadets, community leaders and activists, and the authors of the independent reports, among others. We've been researching best practices in police training academies, and we're reviewing a large volume of documents and data from the city and the department. We have work to do still. We're in the process of conducting additional interviews and conducting more research and analysis. So although our assessment is not yet complete, our February 26th memorandum contains a number of preliminary findings and recommendations, which we're going to highlight now, but I should emphasize that these findings are preliminary in nature, and they're subject to revision, obviously, as review additional information. We've broken our findings down into a number of key areas. First and foremost is diversity, and what we found to date is that academy leadership and supervisory staff currently reflect a much improved level of gender, racial, and ethnic diversity than in years past. We also found that the recruiting unit at the academy also includes significant diversity throughout its ranks. However, academy instructors on the whole are far less diverse. They're still predominantly white male, although there's been some improvement in the last year or two and some signs of improvement, and it does appear that the department recognizes and acknowledges the need to increase diversity among the instructor ranks. Nevertheless, the academy does appear to have an effective outreach and recruiting program, and that extends to other cities and states. It includes targeting historically black colleges and universities, Latinx organizations, and military veterans, among others. And as a result, the cadet candidates that are currently scheduled for the 144th class is reflected in the chart here on the right of this slide, consists of what we understand to be one of the most diverse classes in recent APD history, if it holds up. In addition, I would note that within the past year, department leadership has attended anti-racism and equity workshops in an effort to address and better understand issues of systemic and institutional racism within the department. The academy does appear to do a good job of training cadets on LGBTQ issues, as well as recruiting in the LGBTQ community. However, the department needs to improve and expand its training in this area on a department-wide basis. It does have a valued mentorship program for female cadets to help guide them through the academy and beyond, and could be a model for other mentorship programs. And we also looked at the culture of the academy, and currently, the Training Academy remains a predominantly paramilitary training model with formal classroom settings and a regimented chain of command, though it's less rigid than in years past. However, APD leadership, and really, I would say, the department throughout believes quite strongly that a paramilitary structure is an essential component of police training and is necessary to ensure that cadets are attuned to the chain of command and know how to respond in crisis situations. Although leadership tends to disfavor the warrior versus guardian terminology, they essentially train cadets to be, in their own words, 70% guardians and 30% warriors, basically with the understanding that they train officers to be guardians on a day-to-day basis, but they have to be ready to maintain a warrior mindset on a moment's notice if a threat occurs, and that the only place to learn how to do that, in their mind, is at the academy. To reduce cadet injuries and lower the rate of attrition, which had disproportionately impacted females and cadets of color, the academy has modified or eliminated a couple of past practices. One was what they used to call Fight Day. They had modified it to what was called Will to Win, although we found it was still essentially operated in the same way. They did, in fact, get rid of two instructors who were found to be particularly aggressive during Fight Day prior to the 142nd Cadet Class. These individuals were aggressive, especially to female cadets, and they've since been removed and replaced at the academy. The academy has also eliminated stress reaction testing, which was a series of intense exercises that pushed cadets to their physical and psychological limits to see how they acted under extreme stress. We believe that, were found that this appeared to operate, in a sense, as a sort of hazing ritual to force out cadets early on who could, quote, "not take it." This has been replaced by team-building exercises, which is a, still stressful, but a much more positive approach to these, these exercises. Now, the report of the Community Video Review Panel, we've highlighted a couple of times in our, in our memorandum. This was released in January. It also highlighted concerns regarding the academy's paramilitary culture, and these concerns were echoed by many of the community leaders we've spoken with to date. Particularly, their concern is that the department trains cadets with an us-versus-them bias by prioritizing officer safety over safety of the community, by treating citizen encounters as good guy versus bad guy interactions, by underplaying the value of an officer's emotional intelligence, and by teaching cadets that officers are essentially agents of control and that the public needs to be controlled. And so these and other factors, you know, potentially escalate encounters between police and people of color, homeless individuals, and people with mental illnesses in particular, mental health issues in particular. Now, we also took a look at, we've taken a look at the curriculum and the class schedules at the academy, and this was also the subject of a couple of the reports reviewed, particularly the report completed by Dr. Villanueva in May, affirmed the need for the academy to better develop and incorporate adult learning theories into its teaching methods. We found that while academy instructors have been revising course content to get ready for the next class, their focus has been primarily to ensure that each course complies with state mandates, that is, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement standards and the basic peace officer certification requirements. As for incorporating more adult learning strategies, many instructors indicated they were awaiting guidance for the new organizational training and development manager. Nevertheless, the majority of academy staff has attended two teaching seminars within the past few months, and these seminars have addressed how to effectively present course content and teach in ways that enhance learning. We found historically, academy instructors have been reluctant to incorporate a lot of outside input into training content, and plans are currently underway to purchase an automated learning management system, which is something that will help facilitate better organization of course materials and allow for more efficient curriculum planning in the future. However, the department is yet to actually procure this system. Now, community input was another area we put a lot of focus on, and a couple of things to highlight here. Although the length of the planned 144th Cadet Class has been reduced from 32 to 28 weeks, the academy is adding 30 hours of community engagement programming that was not previously included. They're currently reaching out to many of the organizations listed here, among others, and this is with the stated intent to increase participation and input from community leaders who will be invited to speak to cadets. We look at that as a, as a, as a positive effort if it's executed properly.
Mr. Ellers, if you'll allow me a moment. Mayor, is there any possible way for us to make this a little bit larger, especially the, the last slide? I don't want to miss any of that information, but it was, it's just too small. I can't see it. I'm sorry, y'all.
Has this also been posted to our backup?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mark, you might be able to hit full screen on the top on the View button to make it bigger.
It's, it's actually taking up my entire screen, so I don't know how to, let me see.
Has this also been posted to the backup?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has.
So I think, I think Mayor Pro Tem now has that. Thank you.
And I just did the full screen option for anybody else who doesn't know. It makes it perfectly visible. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, not, not, thank you. So also on the community input front, we do want to highlight again the work of the Community Video Review Panel. We would note this was a difficult but positive collaboration, in our minds at least, between the department and the community that spanned seven months. The panel did find that many of the 110 training videos reviewed were outdated, unprofessional, and perpetuated harmful stereotypes against black and brown communities. And although community mistrust remains high, and I think some panel members were feeling a little jaded from the process, the department is actively making changes to its video library in response to those recommendations, and we believe this is a model that can be built on moving forward. Now, we also looked at cadet injuries and graduation rates based on data that was existed and reported, I believe in the Equity Office Report, and it's, it's data based on APD database on the last five years. And this data illustrates that black cadets are less likely than their peers to graduate from the academy and more likely to be injured than other cadets. Female cadets also have lower graduation rates than white male and Hispanic male cadets. And as a result, black cadets of both genders and female cadets graduating from the academy have been underrepresented when compared to the population of Boston as a whole. Though I would note that the differentials in the last two classes have, have not been materially significant, so that's potentially a positive development. And finally, before we get into the recommendations, I just wanted to highlight a few additional things that I think can be labeled as positive takeaways from our assessment to date, and I'll highlight a few here. First of all, the academy does devote an entire week or 40 hours to crisis intervention team training, and this is a very important training, which gives officers more tools to do their jobs safely and improves their knowledge of mental illness and community resources, and enhances de-escalation skills. They've also recently incorporated 10 hours to what's called Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics, or ICAT, training, and this is the only police de-escalation training shown through independent empirical research to date to significantly reduce use-of-force cases. We also found that the academy staff, both the instructors and the supervisors, are professional and passionate about what they do. And the academy, a best-in-class institution. We believe that creating the organizational development and training manager position was a positive and proactive initiative that will help further transition the academy into a true adult learning institution, if given the proper backing and support. I think there was some indication that the prior manager was not given as much support as she should have been, and I think there's been some discussions and a focus on making sure that happens with the new, with the new individual. Overall, the department has established a foundation, we believe, for more inclusive police-community collaboration and an improved emphasis on diversity and issues of racial equity, although there's obviously still a lot of work to do in this area. So although a truly transformational changes to academy culture and tackling long-term issues of systemic racism will certainly require a longer-term strategy and commitment, we believe there are a number of short-term and long-term measures that can and should be addressed immediately. So I'm going to ask Rick Brown to discuss the short-term measures, and then Dan Linsky will, will address the long-term measures. Rick?
And Mark, I just got a text from Rick that he just lost his connection, and he's trying to get back in, so I'll continue it up if you want to hit the next slide, and we'll go through the preliminary recommendations, and then hopefully Rick will be able to join us shortly. So we want to continue the work of Dr. Villanueva in higher replacement to get that position filled, to make sure we're continuing the adult learning model and making sure the academy reflects the challenges of learners who are not going to sit in a classroom and just get information that's sort of a PowerPoint. We want to make sure that that person has a mandate and authority, that they are speaking, and that they're, it's not a suggestion or thought or an idea, it's actually a way in which the leadership of the department wants to move forward, and they're investing heavily in it. Next one, Mark. We want to hire a training specialist with input from the ODTM to help in build the training and assist in making sure that the courses are reflective of not just checking the box of, you know, 40 hours of this, 10 hours of that, but a narrative that goes throughout the flow of the day, the flow of the week, the flow of the training, where de-escalation and all of the coursework is woven together, along with the ethical responsibilities and the, and the things we need our police officers to be involved with today, and build a blended civilian-police-led academy. We think there should be a revised schedule for the 144th Academy. I am a former United States Marine. I have been to Paris Island, I have been to Quantico OCS training, I've been to police academies. I'm a firm believer in a paramilitary instruction, and that that training is essential. I can tell you in my experience in Watertown, when the Zaniya brothers were using explosive devices and firearms against my officers and I, that, that training was necessary and absolutely necessary. I'm also... I'm also a firm believer in instruction where learners learn a different way. I'm dyslexic. And I have always worked with academies where the stress and the physical fitness and the paramilitary part of the training occurs outside with physical fitness and drill and defensive tactics. And then we go into an academy setting where we learn about what we're doing, how we do it, what our courses are, why we do it, our ethics of when we do it. And we don't, we allow learners to learn in the classroom without that stress that we have in the paramilitary organization. So I support it fully, but I think it should be separated and we recommend a revised schedule for the 144th. It separates PT from academics. Again, as a United States Marine, I spent many a day out in the sandpit doing physical fitness because somebody made a mistake or didn't know their information. That had been the way that they were doing some training at the academy. It's our understanding APD is going to address that after our presentation. I'd say their thoughts on that. I support writing reports when recruits make mistakes because that's what we have them do in the real police world. The skill we need them to do is to write things down and report and document them articulately and effectively. And I'd rather have them practice those skill sets. It also provides a track record of how well a recruit is doing in the academy. As opposed to just some, this recruit is better than another recruit. I can actually look at the file and see how many times they have not kept with the program and needed some expedited work. There's a lot of training going on over there and I want to reiterate what Mark said. You have very passionate, very dedicated academy instructors who understand that they are responsible for molding the future of policing in your city. And they also understand that when they went to an academy 10 or 15 years ago, the thoughts and challenges and needs of police officers in the community today are different. And they're trying to figure out what the best content is that they can present to that. And what will help them with that is a learning management system that will help track programs, training, curriculum, schedules, and make sure that's on track. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, hey, Dan, I think Rick may be back on.
All right. Tag, you're it, Rick.
Rick, are you back on?
I'm back on.
Okay, we're at slide 23, Rick, if you want to pick up from there.
Everything's shutting off on me here, Mark. Hold on. 23. Okay, I'll pick up on 23. Okay, the, go ahead, Mark. The academy should establish an internal curriculum review panel with community representation. The purpose would be to evaluate ways to incorporate DEI content into all aspects of training. The current siloed approach would be modified to ensure consistent messaging throughout all academy training. A check-the-box approach needs to be resisted. While cadets must be thoroughly trained on proper defensive tactics, crowd control and so on, the academy needs to draw home the ethical responsibilities of policing and teach a sensitivity to legitimate community fears that are based in history. Implicit messages, whether from training videos or course content, suggesting that certain people or certain neighborhoods are more dangerous than others, reinforcing negative stereotypes, racial and gender stereotypes, must be resisted and countered. APD should formalize a process to continue a community review of police training videos moving forward. This is an excellent opportunity for APD to continue to engage the community and build relationships. Next slide, Mark. Will to win should be converted to a self-defense exercise near the end of academy training. After cadets have been properly taught defensive tactics, hand-to-hand encounters and similar tactics, we understand that APD has already agreed to this recommendation. The use of the sandpit and having cadets carry sandbags as punishment for messing up should also be modified or eliminated. There's a certain level of physical and psychological stress associated with policing and with training. But the old-school manner of yelling and screaming at cadets and other humiliation tactics serve little purpose other than to instill a military-like boot camp atmosphere that is counterproductive to preparing officers to serve as guardians of the community. The academy should proactively engage a variety of community leaders and activists willing to work productively with APD in presenting genuine community perspectives to help slowly break down barriers of communication and build meaningful relationships. The academy should review all DEI-related courses and determine which may benefit from a more academically oriented content expert or community perspective. Most of these courses can be taught more effectively pursuant to a co-facilitation model with civilian instructors in both the design and delivery of this specific training. The department should consider tapping into the resources of its existing officer base to temporarily assign diverse officers of exceptional skills to assist with academy instruction. Particularly in courses where a diverse perspective would be worthwhile. Anti-racism workshops should be adopted either into academy curriculum or as part of annual training for academy staff and for eventually all officers. These educational opportunities, opportunities for open and honest communications help reduce incidents of bias, so those anti-racism workshops are important. Consider developing or reinstituting a mentorship program for all cadets, especially recruits of color, that will provide additional support for cadets and help them succeed at the academy. Next slide, Mark. Finally, require an ongoing, independent review of the academy by an outside monitor once the 144th academy class begins to ensure effective implementation of these recommendations to help ensure that further adjustments and improvements are made moving forward. And of course, that would be reported to the appropriate stakeholders. We'll move on to long-term measures now and I'll turn that part over to Dan Linsky.
Thanks, Rick. One of the things that we think long-term the department should invest in is to consider professional media literacy educated to develop effective teaching videos. And that comes from Dr. Ferguson's report as well. Especially the work that we saw from the Community Video Advisory Panel. This would provide the opportunity to make videos that fit circumstances, either unique to Austin or unique to around the country, that could train officers, appear to the officers for all the challenges that are out there while they are effectively looking at and preventing bias from being built into the video program that they're putting forward. Certainly something, and I just want to comment that I work with a lot of police departments around the country. Nobody has done the work that the Video Review Panel has done. Every police agency in America's police academy, if they were to look at their videos, is going to find the same issues and concerns that Austin found, and I give credit to Austin and the community for taking on some hard work and going forward and addressing that. And that's a recommendation that every police academy in America should be following. Academy instructors teach their classes and they do a great job doing so. But then they have time when they're not teaching. And what we fight against sometimes is the young cadet gets out of the academy, goes into a car with a field training officer and, you know, the old-timer says, "Don't, don't listen to what they told you in the academy. I'll tell you how it really is." Well, we've taken steps across America and Austin's taken to make sure the academy is training recruits for how it really is. And making sure that the FTO program doesn't discourage the training that occurred and try and change some of the foundations that were put in these recruits. We think that having academy instructors serve as FTOs will, one, have more people in their department interested in becoming an academy instructor because there's some concerns and issues with being instructed at the academy that an FTO position might assist. It also will allow the FTOs, the academy staff, to go out and ride to make sure that the FTO training officers are keeping up their end of the bargain and they're training recruits and holding recruits accountable to what the academy trained them. And they can be extra eyes on the street for academy leadership and the department leadership to make sure recruits are following the policies, procedures and the training. And I can tell you that recruits build a relationship up with kind of a mentor relationship with academy instructors. And if they go out on the street and they've got some issues, concerns, if it's an ethical challenge or a thought or idea or something doesn't feel right to them, if they have the ability to team back with instructors that say they serve as role models, that will provide for the ability to build an active bystander presence in your police department. What we want to have is police officers, when they see something going wrong, they don't act as bystanders who let things go on. We want them to be active bystanders who take action and do something to address it. We believe they should develop strategies to enhance long-term racial, ethnic and gender diversity of academy staff. Your recruiting process is amazing. I could only recruit in the city of Boston. You had to be a resident a year before to come in. So we were losing out on great ethnicities, people of color, veterans who had served, that we couldn't even consider for our academy process through our civil service regulations. And your team has gone far and wide to find folks. You have a very diverse recruiting team. And they start with the recruits up front, know them and develop relationships. We think there's an opportunity to shift some of them over to help and continue the training once they get the recruits in the academy and to help them to get other diverse candidates come to the academy and help share their lessons with the recruits. The way in which Texas training is set up is through a process called T-call. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. I'm dyslexic and I have to learn in a certain way. And if I were to sit in your Austin Police Academy and have 40 hours in one week of the same police instructor giving me the same course of instruction for 40 hours and I'm tested on it once, I would lose out on a learning opportunity. I don't learn that way. I'm better off learning two hours on Monday, two hours on Tuesday that touches on the work on Monday, two hours on Friday that touches on Tuesdays and Mondays work. I have a test on Monday. I learned some things well. I learned some things not so well. I get to go over where I study group and find out what, you know, what I did right and wrong. And we make the academy process a whole learning process where all of that information is woven in. And then we're doing that with our other courses. If it's criminal procedure or constitutional law, if it's ethics, if it's community engagement strategies, if it's, you know, policing a diverse community, if it's history of policing. By changing the block courses, the way they currently are structured, you could have an academy where you can have a theme of knowledge and a theme of ethics and a theme of culture go throughout the entire academy day. I would fully recommend starting the academy at 7:00 AM. It's Texas. You guys are very hot. Recruits, I think, should show up for work in their, in their physical fitness uniform. And maybe, Mark, we'll go to the next slide because I'm probably talking one slide ahead. I know this might, I don't think you have enough physical fitness in the academy. I looked at it. It was 40 hours when it was a full academy. It's even less when an academy was slimmed down a bit. I would like to see recruits be physically fit. Physically fit recruits use less force. They're more comfortable in themselves. They're less likely to engage in aggressive behavior. And I think you could benefit from starting the day at 7:00 AM. Do your roll call. Recruit, get limber, stretch, have physical fitness, get cleaned up. We can, you know, do all kinds of stress and paramilitary work with them for the two hours in the morning. And then we put them in an academic setting where instructors are playing off each other's themes so that the instructor in the afternoon is taking information that I taught in the morning. And we're sharing and we're, we're, we're learning from each other and we're learning together as a team. And I think there's a way to improve that along with changing the physical fitness capabilities at the academy to give them more time to work out. Community engagement strategies. I would like to see community engagement strategies. We think community engagement strategies are huge. We don't want them to be somebody coming into the academy for two hours and we check a box. And when we looked at recruit surveys, they said it seemed like people that we just had to get through this class. We don't want classes that are imperative for recruits' careers and imperative for our community engagement strategies to be a box-checking mission. We want there to be an immersion into what policing is all about. Having them go to homeless shelters and seeing what the homeless advocates do. Having them go to mental health clinics where people are in crisis and seeing that there but for the grace of God, go I. And then treating your fellow man the way you want to be treated is probably the way every police officer should start his day out of an academy class or out of his cruiser. And Austin had some folks that they hired for the class that had moved into Austin. They were to bring them in and they've been using them as a civilian liaison to the neighborhoods. And they've been experiencing what the community is looking for. Each community and each neighborhood is different and we need to make sure that the community is involved in how they want to be policed by the police and that involvement is loud and clear. And we think that those immersion programs in the community, not as I'm the police cadet, I'm here to, you know, be the savior, but to be an educational piece for these cadets so that they understand the history they're coming into and they understand the challenges of the community. I had police officers frustrated in Boston when community members would witness violent crimes and they wouldn't come forward and help. And they would say, why, you know, why would people not help? Well, some people live with very legitimate fear in their communities and it's a reality for them and we have to make officers aware of that. And they have to build their own relationships to build that trust. ICAT training is a phenomenal program and we'd like to see that continued as a refresher and continue to work on how do we de-escalate? How do we, how do we do everything possible to make sure that encounters with police officers are, you know, by the art of Sun Tzu, the best battle is the one where we never had a wage battle and we can talk ourselves out of issues and concerns. And we, we want to make sure Austin's investing in a health and wellness buildup for recruits and make sure that they understand wellness and emotional survival. If you don't have a good emotional survival training program, recruits can take the stress of law enforcement and it can become an us versus them if we're not letting some of the things that they see on the street be dealt with in a way that's, that's helpful and helps them keep well. And academy staff can be burned out sometimes too. Those are long hours, long days. And making sure we have a process to assist them. Mark, I think we, we go back to you now with next steps, once we complete Group A.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dan. And this will just be very quick. I just wanted to let the council know, kind of just remind the council that we still have work to do in, in the assessment of the Training Academy. Basically, we're, you know, we'll be identifying police academies and evidence-based best practices. We've got some more interviews to do and research and analysis before submitting a final report, which I believe will be coming out in early to mid-April at the latest. Group B is, is the next phase and that's going to be due at the end of September. That's going to take a deeper dive into recruitment and promotion practices. We're going to take a look at a large number of use-of-force incident reports and analyze those. We'll be looking at data on police citizen interactions and reviewing bias and discrimination complaints over the last 10 years, among other things. And then two phases of this review that would still pending council approval and if approved at some point, Group C would include a compliance review of race and discrimination employment laws, litigation regarding alleged police misconduct and identifying patterns of systemic racism and, and other forms of discrimination. And then Group D, if approved in the future, is would be the electronic communications review and looking at public posts on social media platforms and identifying electronic evidence of bias, racism, homophobia and so forth. And so that is our, basically an overview. We're happy to answer questions either now or at an appropriate time this afternoon. So thank you very much. I'll stop sharing the screen.
Thank you, Mark, Dan and Rick. Really appreciate the thoughtfulness and thoroughness of this preliminary report. I'm going to now turn it over to our APD leadership. Chief Manley's going to kick it off and then I'll pass it over to Chief of Staff Gay to provide some initial response to these recommendations and then we'll open it up to questions from the mayor and council.
Yep, thank you, manager. Just make sure that you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, very good. Rick, Mark, Dan, good to see you all again. And Mayor and Council, I actually very much appreciate the opportunity for us to be before you today to highlight the work that we have been doing well over a year now to move forward the Training Academy, the curriculum, the instructor competencies, all in preparation of restarting our cadet class. We have very much enjoyed the engagement with Kroll. And what you will see here shortly is a presentation from the Austin Police Department regarding the recommendations that Kroll just presented. And as you will see, we accept and agree with each of these recommendations. When you look at the short-term recommendations, you will see that other than a few of them that are more of an ongoing recommendation, we do expect to complete each and every one of those short-term recommendations in the month of April. As has been well discussed and as you all are well aware, I have announced my retirement and will be leaving the organization here shortly. So Chief of Staff Troy Gay will go over a presentation here in a few minutes outlining all of the progress we have already made on each of these recommendations, the plan for full implementation, and then we too will
for full implementation, and then we too will be available for questions. But since Chief Gay will be here for the continued implementation of these recommendations, he will give you the presentation and then again, we will be available for questions on the back end. So I will now turn it over to Chief Gay. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. Can y'all hear me? Getting the nod. I'll just wait for the presentation to come up. While we're waiting for that, I just want to recognize, as Kroll did, that the passion of the cadet instructors and leadership, they have definitely been working very diligently over the last year or so, following Dr. Villanueva's roadmap that she worked on. So very excited to give you an update. Can we go to the next slide, please? I will try not to read these. I'll just sort of summarize. I know this was sent to you yesterday. I'm excited to say that we have hired a division manager, which is the organizational development training manager. It is Dr. Ann Kringen. She has a PhD with a major field in criminal justice, has done work with other agencies in their hiring and training in their academies. So we're very excited to onboard her in March 15th. Also, we're excited that Dr. Villanueva has agreed to stay on as a temporary employee, not only to onboard Dr. Kringen, but also to stay on as a resource for our department. We did recognize what Kroll had mentioned about making sure that this position is held to the highest level of that as a commander. As I mentioned, the organizational development training manager with a lower position in our organization, we have elevated this position to a division manager, which is equal with the commander. This will also be, we will make sure that the leadership command, as well as those in the academy, understand the position and authority that this position brings. Also, we're excited that we will be hiring a, it says training specialist, but we are in the process of reclassifying this position to a more appropriate title of a training supervisor, which will help this division manager move forth with, I believe Dr. Ferguson in his report really mentioned the need to have someone that is a subject matter expert in curriculum building. So this person will be there to assist the division manager in helping us with this endeavor. Next slide, please. As they mentioned, the learning management system, we are on track to expedite the procurement of this process. We did get the RFQs back on February 12th. We are on track to select a preferred vendor by mid-April. And then we will be working with city management to expedite bringing that forward to city council for approval. The next recommendation, five, was to formalize the internal review panel. We are excited that we are working towards the creation of this panel. I think that the work that we did with the video review panel sort of highlighted the need to have a community representation. We are working with both OPO and Equity Office to identify potential individuals that could serve on this role, as well as potentially members that served on the video review panel. We do anticipate that the group will be established by mid-March. And of course, the training specialists or the training supervisor will come onboard in mid-April. Next is the, we will be looking at how to incorporate this internal review board. So as I mentioned, is that we have already begun the evaluation of several of our courses. We went through the first 10 weeks and once we get our division manager onboard, she will be starting that review on the first 10 weeks and we anticipate that between mid-March and April, she'll be able to review the first 10 weeks as well as the rest of the academy curriculum. Next slide, please. This particular recommendation was really to effectively train on proper defensive tactics and messaging throughout the academy. We totally agree with this transition and with this agreement that these particular topics will be addressed throughout the academy. We are going to have increased efforts aligned with Dr. Villanueva and the Kroll recommendations to ensure there is consistent messaging throughout the academy. So it's not just a one and done course, it's something that will continually be messaged throughout the academy. Also, in the next recommendation, really is that we have created that framework as Kroll mentioned. We have worked with the community members on the community video review panel. We are very excited that we have really taken the time to be able to work with the community to identify and agree. We will definitely not be showing any videos that have not gone through a review process and really leaning towards more of a learn, adult learning methods to replace some of the videos that had been used in the past. Next slide, please. As mentioned, we did, we are replacing the will to win with a self-defense. So we do agree that this should move towards the end of the academy. We definitely want to make sure that our new officers are fully trained with the escalation communications and other training prior to going through this self-defense exercise. 10 is also in that same line that we definitely want our cadets to be fully exposed to defensive tactics prior to that last exercise. The number 11 really goes over, as was mentioned, to have cadets succeed by giving them the tools, the self-defense training, the challenges that occur with BT. So definitely, we intend to really emphasize service in the academy. I know it was mentioned about the warrior versus guardian. We definitely believe that the daily work of our officers is in the guardian mindset and that's what we need to be teaching on, although we do need to have our officers prepared as Mark had mentioned, when there is a threat that we have to be able to use defensive tactics or other type of skills that we learn in the academy. Next slide, please. It was mentioned about utilizing the sandpit or carrying sandbags as a punishment or discipline. This was eliminated. This was communicated with the staff as of February 1st, so this will no longer be used in the academy. The next slide, or the next recommendation, 13, about physical fitness team building. It was mentioned by Dan that physical fitness training should be separated from your academic learning, your team building. We totally agree with that. We will also be placing all of our physical fitness training on the calendar. So we agree with that recommendation. As part of its community engagement program, the academy should proactively reach out to a wide variety of community leaders willing to work. So we have already been working to identify community groups. As Mark has mentioned, we added 30 additional hours in the academy. We are working to actually figure out what groups we'll be utilizing and what we want to gain from each of the classes. We believe that the learned and lived experiences from our community is really going to highlight that service as well as align out the community's expectations for our officers. Next slide, please. It was talked about the history of policing. This course was recommended, it was developed through the work of OPO and the University of Texas Law Department. We have accepted the curriculum. We have actually found a subject matter expert in the community who has agreed, Dr. Courtney Robinson, to teach this course, which will also be co-taught by one of our sergeants who is there at the Training Academy. So we're very excited about really introducing this particular course as well as making sure that this course is the foundation to where it can be reinforced throughout the academy for our particular cadets. Also, in the next, it talks about the number 16, about the above course, which is the history of policing, is really coupled with a training, community outreach, immersion strategies such as cadets spending time in food pantries. This is something that we'll talk more in the long-term strategies, but we have been already looking at the success that we had with the eight cadets that had been working with the district representatives out in the community and really trying to co-create a two weeks prior to the academy, which we hope to have implemented by the 145th Police The next is the 17, which is talking about really making sure that all the courses are looked within a DEI lens. As we talked about above, that we are not only doing the history of policing, but looking at all our classes to make sure that we are looking at our courses through a DEI lens. And we do anticipate that that will be at the completion of April when we have our new division manager onboard to relook at our curriculum. The next slide, please. As it was mentioned, we have taken a lot of efforts to try to diversify our recruiting and training academy. We had made efforts and recognized that there is still work to be done. Although we have added additional instructors, we recognize that we need to bring more officers with diversity. So we are identifying more adjunct instructors that can actually fill that role until we actually increase the diversity with our instructors. We do like the concept of co-facilitating and that would be not only with adjunct instructors within our organization, but also bringing in community members on particular courses that have identified to where it'll be critical to have that viewpoint from the community. We definitely are really looking at the groundwater analysis. This is part of the department's equity plan for our department and the Training Academy will be part of that. We anticipate here in the next several weeks that we will bring forth a long-term plan to council to hopefully approve that will really look at our leadership, our understanding, our DEI lens, as well as looking at the groundwater analysis that will be taught through for all of our officers in the department. We talked about the academy should reinstitute the practice of following up with cadets. Although this has been something that informally has always been done, we recently put that into the SOPs and is already complete and we will make sure that that is done on a regular basis. Next slide, please. We do have a very successful women's mentoring group. This is something over the last couple of years, we felt that it was necessary, think that it was already mentioned that we were losing female cadets and we really wanted to create that mentoring group. We recognize that they are not the only group that needs to be mentored throughout the academy. We'll be utilizing the best practices learned from that particular group and working with affinity groups to really establish mentoring groups for all of our cadets. The last is really what was identified in the short term of having that independent review, really making sure that we are being held accountable and that we are actually implementing the reviews. We will be working with city manager's office to identify potential consultant that can do that work. That is all the short term and I'll quickly go over the long term and then I will turn it over. Next slide, please. We definitely agree on the number one, which is to build that positive collaboration between APD and the community. Again, I just keep pointing back to the community video review panel. I believe that it really broadened the lens of our instructors and really recognized the need that we need to have community input when we are developing our curriculum. This will be assigned to our division manager when she comes onboard in March. We also recognize the need for our FTOs. We do not want to have a culture to where you graduate from the academy and then you go out and the FTO says, well, we're going to, now we're really going to teach you how to do real police work. We do not believe that that is the culture, but we do believe that our FTOs need to be in sync with our academy. They do come to our academy to do annual training. We will make sure that they understand the expectations of our departments and also follow through with them. We are also incorporating a survey, just like you saw with the Dr. Ferguson's report, with our cadets for our cadet instructors. We will also be doing that for our FTOs to ensure that they are aligned with the mission of our department. We do have our instructors ride quarterly and that is really to make sure that that things are aligned with how they're teaching and they're aligned with what's going on with patrol operations and really overseeing that FTO program. Next slide, please. This is the intentional strategy for enhancing long-term diversity. I believe I've already covered that and we recognize that and we definitely have made efforts towards that and this will be a continuous process. The next is the academy class schedules. We do agree that this should be taught in smaller segments. As mentioned, T-Call has recommendations and when they provide recommendations, it's recommendations that they really believe it should be taught in a 40-hour block. I do believe that in working with T-Call and working with our APD, T-Call Advisory, that we can potentially get that changed. But like you said, that is a long-term strategy and we believe that we can get this incorporated by the 145th class in conjunction with the learning management system as well. Next slide, please. This is about our physical fitness. We totally agree that physical fitness is key. Currently, T-Call does not require any physical fitness standards for post-graduation. This is something that our department has been working on for several years about setting a baseline for our officers. This is also something that has been brought up in legislation for the last two sessions at least, and there has been pushback by associations regarding setting these standards. But we will continue to work on this project and think it is key to having a healthy workforce and physical fitness is part of that. Number six is really the part about expanding physical fitness training to a daily regimen. And this is where really starting in the morning, and we already talked about separating the academic and the physical fitness. There are some limitations to the size of our facility because it is for three of our public safety agencies. We will be working to identify some short-term and long-term goals of how to get this accomplished. Next slide, please. This is about the two-week course, the Project Connect, that I talked about already. We're very excited to co-create this with the community and really for our new office We're very excited to co-create this with the community and really for our new officers to really connect with the community and understand that that level of service and the expectations of our community for our department and our officers. We have already added 30 additional hours to the actual curriculum, which of course will have our community members who will be able to share their learned and lived experiences with our cadets. It was already mentioned about the ICAT training. We definitely believe that de-escalation is key in any department and believe that we need to have continued refresher training and this will be built into our biannual training that TCO requires, but we will also be adding that into a mandate that will be done with all of our officers. I believe I have one more slide. This is to promote wellness and burnout. We definitely agree with this. We are going to try to schedule our academies to where we do have a break. We believe just like in the academic world of an institution of higher learning, that is where instructors will use the summertime or a short break to work on their curriculum, work on new learning styles, their professional development. So we definitely agree that we need to be able to build in that time. As it was already mentioned, is that one of our key takeaways in our department is really the officer wellness and this goes right in line with our vision for that particular program. The last is the long-term system of internal and external reviews. This is an ongoing process. Although we do agree there should be periodic reviews, we believe classes should be reviewed and critiqued and changed on a regular basis after they're taught. So this is an ongoing process. And I do believe that that was the last slide, so I appreciate it. And if you have any questions, we will be here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and really appreciate you and your colleagues leaning into this, you know, agreeing with all the recommendations and being clear about how you are addressing them as part of this review. I'll just remind the Mayor Council that the Crawl will be coming back with the final reports at the end of the month and so we will be providing that to you, but like to now pass it back to you, Mayor, and open it up for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues? Mayor Protem?
As you can imagine, Mayor, my office tonight, we have many, 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 many questions, but I will, I will try to only take up the appropriate amount of space. Some of the questions that came up for me was separating PT from academics. You have to forgive me, it was the gentleman with a very strong Northeast accent. Was it Mr. Linsky?
Yes, ma'am, but I would remind you that the pilgrims landed just outside my house here. So that's the original accent and I don't know what happened once it went across the country. Yesterday, Linsky.
When you said the thing that you said, it was something that as a layman, it had occurred to me on multiple occasions. Like I wonder if there should be some separation between the academic component and the physical component. And so I really, I would like very much to just get a little more insight from you about what, what do you think that looks like when it actually manifests? What does that look like?
So I was the drill instructor for the Boston Police Academy, I was the physical fitness instructor and I was also the criminal law instructor. So at 7:00 AM, they showed up and, you know, the intensity changes as you, you know, go and you build relationship with recruits and you get them used to the process. But did I see Chief Gay nodding his head because I know he was in Paris Island at one point with me. I screamed and yelled and got them nervous and got them hyper with their heart rate up because that's what's going to happen if they're challenged with physical force or violence on the street. You go from talking to citizens to immediately reacting, your heart rate goes up. And we have to train recruits to deal with an elevated heart rate and then to have that stress and to go back to the training, to go back to what they will learn in physical fitness and defensive tactics, to will learn in de-escalation, will learn what the policies, rules and procedures and laws are. I can't tell you the number of times people come up and scream and yell in my face, but that's not against the law. It's acceptable and you have a human reaction and we have to train that human reaction out of recruits. The way to do that is when you, so for us, you show up at 7 o'clock. Everyone starts, we start out in the parking lot with our roll call, physical fitness uniforms. We stretch out to make sure we're reducing. When I first was academy instructor, my lieutenant was saying, "Go out there and get them, Dan." The goal was to stress these kids out and see who would quit. And then became the chief and I said, "Wait a minute, I've invested $100,000 in recruiting, get these kids in the academy and make the best class we had. I don't want them to go away. I want to give them the tools to succeed." So we went to where we yell and we scream and it's regimented and we put them under stress when they push-ups and sit-ups and, you know, we're getting them in shape. At the same time, preparing them for that stressful situation and preparing them for a parabola organization is as per sequence as ordered. But then when you go back to the classroom, I would turn it off and I would come in my first day when I was their criminal law instructor and say, "Listen, my role of responsibility out there is a different role of responsibility here. My job here is to give you information and to provide you with the knowledge you need to be a cop and to tell you how to deal with people as a person." And I would teach my class without any stress. There was open conversation. I realized some students learn different than others and I had to figure out how could I get this student to understand it and that student to understand it and to make sure I was getting the information across. And I can't do that if they're waiting for the door to open and someone to scream and yell at them and take them outside and have them do physical fitness in their dress uniforms. It just isn't effective at all. There is a time for that, there's a place for it. It's not in the academy setting. And I think if you expand your physical fitness training, separate it out, then start the academic day where they can be tasked with learning and I go back to that 40-hour block. I can't learn in a 40-hour block and I want to make sure we're talking about ethics and how we treat people and my life experience. When I, while working undercover, a homeless guy saved my life and I share with my recruits that experience and try and get them to realize that, you know, not everyone who's been arrested is a bad person, right? We all have bad days and try and humanize that police work. And then the instructor who came behind me when he was doing patrol procedures, tried to bring that same theme that our academy commander had put into us and put forward. So I think there is a time for stress in physical fitness and academics should be, we learn by the different ways. Some people are sight-oriented, some people are sound-oriented, some people experientially oriented and we want to give them the opportunity to learn without undue stress. The academy is a stressful place as it is and in separating the two, I think would be beneficial to all.
Thank you, Mr. Linsky. I think I'll follow up with you. I don't know that I got the clarity I was looking for, but this is not the only opportunity we're going to have to communicate. The other questions that I had, so during the course of the conversation, did I hear somebody say that we're going to go from a 32-week to 28-week timeframe? And if so, I would just like to know what the implications are of losing those four weeks. I'm concerned.
No, I can address that real quick and you and Rick and it, but.
Oh, Mr. Ellis, thank you.
Mr. Ellis, how you doing? Just, yeah, what, what we understand, the academy is being knocked down from 32. Originally it was 32 to 26 weeks and what they were cutting out was predominantly the intermediate course content. That they are not eliminating it entirely. What they're doing is they're just taking it out of the initial academy training and then the graduating officers will be taught these intermediate courses over the first two years of being an officer. So they will be coming back to the academy once they're out on the street patrolling and they've graduated and progressed to officers. And so that intermediate content probably takes up, I'm not sure if it was four weeks or six weeks of content. But what they did was they eliminated that and then they added 30 hours.
It's not removed entirely.
It's not removed, it's just removed from the initial cadets.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mark, I just want to comment, so by removing the intermediate courses, it's, it's, Mr. Linsky again, by removing that course, those are courses that are better experienced by a police officer who has some time on the job, who has been out there and experienced it and it's, 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 so I applaud APD for moving those courses down row. It also gives them some touch points with new police officers. So we graduate academy recruits, they do a great job training them, they go out the door, they start to get, you know, a little salty, can get some bad habits. This allows them to come back in the academy and we can look at what they went through in the past six months, nine months, a year, train them on additional things. Now that you've got some experience, you might understand this better. That freed up more time to put some of the community policing initiatives back into the academy and supplement that timeframe on the other end. So we agree with pushing out the intermediate work. For me, also, you can focus then on the guardian mentality and training class, how to be able to go out and engage people and deal with the community first. And then we can teach the tactical stuff that, you know, we might need someday on the job, but the majority of the time, we're not going to need that. But that way we focus on getting officers out the job with a community understanding and then we can focus on training for a terrorist event in my, my experience or others that, you know, once you're a guardian, you can, you can learn the other skill sets. That's the thoughts I think they had on it and I agree with it. I think our team agrees with it.
Appreciate that, thank you. So then one of the other things that was said was about emotional survival, which got me thinking about another item in addition to this one that my office thought through was around mental health and wellness. I'd like very much to get a clearer picture of, given the opportunity to have very thoroughly assessed, you know, our, well, as much as you have been able to thus far, you know, until we get the latter half of the report, the ability to assess, what do we have the appropriate protocol in place to, first of all, as people come through, make assessments about mental health and wellness and whether or not we are recruiting the appropriate parties in terms of mental health and, you know, who, who should be in this position. But then more importantly, what does the future level of assessment look like? How frequently should we be doing that? The truth of the matter is, I don't think any of us don't recognize the difficulty of the job and the exposure to trauma consistently. You all on the line, you don't know me, but my husband is a first responder, in which case I, you know, for almost 19 years now, I've been watching what it looks like when they come home. I know what this looks like. That to say, I do think there should be some very clear and concise opportunities for us to check back in and make sure everybody's okay mentally. And so I'm not asking you to answer that question right now. I just wanted to air it. In fact, you don't have to answer it. I know my colleagues have questions. And then the one last thing I would leave with, multiple people talked about chain of command. Civilians don't know what y'all are talking about. You know, we all know, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen, some of these other cliches, but they don't know what y'all are talking about when you talk about chain of command. So I would like very much, in the future, when we have these conversations with our constituents are listening, I just want to make sure that you said TCO, BPOC, this, you know, I want to make sure that we're very careful about making sure that our community understands that we are not talking over them, that we're talking directly to them and that is very important that they understand the conversation as well and that we're not going to use vernacular that they don't understand. And I think there's nobody who doesn't understand what chain of command is. They get it. It's like you pick a boss and then you pick a couple of people under them. There's no way that one person can always be the person that you run to. But what the implications there are, again, we don't have to answer that today. I would like to, in the future, get some answers from y'all about what that looks like and what are the implications for engagement with the community. But thank you for, everybody for your time. I really appreciate that y'all said the thing that, I think we thought this all along. This is a beautiful opportunity for Austin to be the template for the rest of the country, for us to get it right, so much so that people look at us and say, "Wow, how did y'all do that?" So when you said the thing about how, you know, Austin contributed this much so far to this process and nobody else is doing it and everybody else should be, I've been trying to say that all along. I really think this was an opportunity and I'd like very much to make sure we all keep that same, you know, positive, optimistic energy and take this as an opportunity to get it so right. It's what everybody else looks to as the example. So thank you for your time. We appreciate you and all the community members who contributed as well.
Councilmember Kelly?
Oh, thank you, everyone, for this really thorough presentation and thank you, Mayor Protem, for bringing up the alphabet soup. I know a lot of times during staff meetings or even council meetings, I sometimes don't understand what we're talking about and even with a public safety background, it can get confusing. I have a couple of questions. My first one, I was hoping to ask Chief Manley what his thoughts were on this presentation. Chief, what do you see as the biggest change proposed here and the most significant finding? Further, do you have any thoughts on this process and presentation on your vision for the academy?
I guess maybe what the best finding or what I hope that people sees on is the fact that we are agreeing with all of the recommendations and that there has been a tremendous amount of work done over the past year on implementing them, so much so that all of the short-term recommendations, we expect to be completed by mid-April, other than those that will be complete but ongoing. So I think that this is an opportunity to highlight the work that the men and women have been doing and working on. We started this by bringing in outside experts prior to these reports with Dr. DeVianueva and I think this is a furtherance of that. I do believe that partnering with Crawl brought in experts that both have experience, real lived experience serving in communities across our country, serving as law enforcement officers, but also bring a completely different focus, that community focus that is so important here in this moment right now and that their recommendations are very well-balanced. And again, we are well on our way to full implementation, especially of those short-term the complete prior to the next class.
Thank you so much for that. And then my last question really is for the City Manager Spencer. Thank you so much for bringing this to council. I would hope that maybe you could explain what our next steps might be to ensure that our city is able to start start a new academy. I know currently we're about 250 officers short of where we should be according to our city's population and that we're really at staffing levels in the police department where we were in 2011. What are our next steps to start a new academy? What would that look like?
Thank you, councilmember, and I think the first step is really getting this feedback from the, from you and your colleagues today on the work that has been going on and that we will continue to do. As you've heard, there has been tremendous amount of leaning into the recommendations that have been presented, both the ones that have been completed, the ones that are ongoing, and then the path forward to completing the rest. We as management are committed to getting this academy started as soon as possible and we await further direction from council and so today's conversation will be an important one.
Thank you so much for that. I look forward to working with my colleagues as well as your office and our consultants to ensure that we can have the best police department in the entire country and that also our citizens here in Austin are well-protected from the things that happen every day. I think that public safety has always been paramount and I look forward to ensuring that we have the best department in the country. Thanks.
Colleagues? Councilmember Alter, then Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that went into this and the expertise of our consultants here. I wanted to drill down a little bit. We just received this yesterday, so I apologize if this is fully in the report. But I had some questions specific to the ICAT, the Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics Training. I noticed that that was praised for being 10 hours, but then elsewhere it says that the gold standard is 16 hours. So can someone please tell me what we're planning moving forward with respect to the numbers of hours for that training, which as I understand it is the Gold Star Training for de-escalation and not using force?
Let me take, I'll take an initial crack at that, councilmember. Yeah, I think what we intended to do was to, we praise the fact that the Police Academy has incorporated ICAT training into the curriculum. I believe it was instituted approximately a year ago, if I'm not mistaken. However, I would note that the, you know, this is a curriculum that is designed by the Police Executive Research Forum and normally it is more than 10 hours. I think it's a 16-hour course content. What we understand is, and we, we will be doing more analysis of this before the final report comes out, taking a closer look at exactly what curriculum the academy is using with respect to ICAT and how effective we believe that is, under 10 hours. They do have additional de-escalation training. Under 10 hours, they do have additional de-escalation training. So I believe there's another eight hours of specific de-escalation training that they kind of do in conjunction with ICAT. That has to do with things like verbal judo and other things that I think, you know, Rick or Dan could probably speak to better. But that's something we need to take a deeper dive in. But we were praising the fact that they've at least instituted ICAT. That's a step in the right direction. Now we need to analyze and continue to evaluate it. And we'll have more to say, I think, in our final report about that.
And ICAT originally was designed for in-service officers, officers who had already graduated the academy, they were out, they had experience to try and bring them back in and get them engaged in de-escalation tactics. And there was this curve come up with what they thought was the appropriate timeframe. So I believe that's the course that was taught to all of the active-duty officers at Austin PD, that full course. And it looks like they adopted some of the ICAT training in addition to other de-escalation training, which I believe it's a total, and I think Mark Speng was on the call, 20 hours of de-escalation and communications, crisis communications training that they put together. So that's where I think ICAT originally was an in-service training program, and it's evolved into be a recruit supplemental program as well.
Okay. So I appreciate that. When you do come back at the end of the month with your report, I hope we can have some greater clarity on what those recommendations. I think one of the biggest concerns we have is an actual or perceived additional use of force when maybe it's not necessary. So I think that making sure we have the gold standard for that training as we're doing this is important. Another area that was of concern to me, which I didn't see covered here in terms of the training academy, is what training is being offered with respect to victims and trauma-informed approaches to victims. As I understood it previously, it was something like one day on victims. And I know that we have a lot of expertise even within APD in our Victim Services Unit. They play a role sometimes of, you know, teaching officers about how strategies to use when you have trauma, because they have that training additionally. But I have the sense that our officers would benefit from additional training in that area. So what are your recommendations on that area?
So that's something we hope to dig further into, because there's a number of adjunct instructors who come in, who work in sexual assaults, domestic violence units, who do training as well. I know that one of the instructors, it's an adjunct instructor that comes in, is a member of the gay community and talks about the issues and challenges that members in the LGBTQ community deal with as victims and how they're victimized and how they interact with police sometimes when they're victimized and they might be keeping a portion of their life from, from others and don't want to be publicly owned. So that's the process we're going through with the actual curriculum discovery as to what's in the curriculum for academy instructors, what are adjunct people coming in and saying that are police officers who deal with some of these specialization units? I know we had a child witness to violence program, it was very successful for our police officers who had a domestic violence case, where we realized that the children need to be treated as well as dealing with whatever law enforcement actually had to do. And we're assessing exactly what that is, including community voices, what is, what used to be the community voices? And then hopefully to figure out what the new community voices coming are in is the department figures out who they're bringing in to kind of co-present some of these topics. So that, that will be something we'll be addressing, hopefully at the end of this month for you in further detail.
Okay. I would just like to express that I'd like to see us really take seriously the opportunity to provide trauma-informed training. You know, we have a lot of sexual assaults and a lot of domestic violence issues that we are dealing with and our officers are called to deal with. And one day of training just doesn't seem sufficient for that, you know? And those are cases I think they would, would encounter on a regular basis. The third area that I wanted to ask about, you know, Austin, we have a very large Spanish-speaking population. And I was sort of shocked when we were going through the program in earlier conversations that we had with how little Spanish language training was offered, even on a voluntary basis through the academy. Can you speak to what you're looking at and, and, you know, in a community that has a large Spanish-speaking population, what is the best practice?
That's a challenge law enforcement is dealing with across the country, to make sure we're getting more language skills out there. What we heard from recruits and cadets is that they want more Spanish training. They found it to be valuable, found it to be something that was interesting to them, was presented well in an informative manner. And the only challenge with the academy is we try to get all kinds of knowledge in a period of time and then have them out in the street. So we will evaluate exactly what the language program is. But every, not every, but majority of recruits asked that more Spanish language training be put into the curriculum going forward. And that might also be one of those intermediate classes that we can get them trained up as recruits and then, you know, reinforce some of that language skills going forward. I know some departments actually incentivize people who are bilingual and able to do translation. And there's a financial incentive to do it, so that people go to classes and get the training that they need so they can have their skillsets and at the same time, be a better cop on the street with it.
Yeah. And I've been, as someone who's a language lover, I would just say there's also a lot of, you know, online options that didn't traditionally used to be there that have come really far if someone's actually interested in learning the language to help build and reinforce what they learn in person. And then my final question right now is about the learning management system and the options there. We sometimes have a tendency not to buy the Cadillac version. And I, I'd like to make sure that we are getting what we need, given the high priority that our community has placed, on making sure that we set up an academy that is a learning environment that is, is, you know, commensurate with the tasks that we're asking our police officers to take and the risks so that they are prepared. So can you speak a little bit more to that learning management system and sort of how you recommend we proceed with that?
I haven't seen the returns and the vendors that are responding. I agree with you wholeheartedly. There's no sense in investing in something that is not going to be steady and with you for years to come. And sometimes in government, we look for the low bidder. And my mother would say, sometimes you get what you pay for. So if there's any ability to set, you know, sometimes we set standards on RFPs in my old department, where we wanted very specific things, and that sometimes would be a sole source because of the uniqueness of a program. So I would recommend that you buy the Cadillac Escalade of learning management systems. It's only going to be an item that is going to be needed even more as you move forward and videos and adult learning and learning modules come into play, especially, hopefully we're out of the COVID world soon, but online training and processes are something that I think our corporation is investing in. So I would invest in the Cadillac.
Councilmember Tovo, I think, was next. Thank Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you all very much. And thank you to our police department for the response. I had a couple of questions that I think are, are aimed at the consultants first. Let's see. There was a conversation about recruiters and the fact that, I'm sorry, about the academy instructors and the fact that the academy instructors are not reflecting the diversity of our community. And in the report, you talked about, about a variety of reasons why the academy has had difficulty increasing diversity among, among the instructors. And I wanted to get a little bit of how you, how you accumulated that information. Was it, it looks like it was, it, it looks like it was through instructor surveys. But I want to understand whether that information came just from current instructors or whether it came from individuals in the force who might have considered instructing, becoming instructors and they were offering you information about why they wouldn't consider it. And I think it, it had, it sounded like, one, the financial, that there was a financial disincentive as a loss, because of the loss of overtime and shift differential pay, and then some others, physical fitness requirements, a perception that the instructor positions lack prestige or a pathway to promotion. So two questions there. One is, how did you compile that information? And two, can you give us some sense of what the primary, what the primary factor is? Is it primarily a financial disincentive? Is it not seeing a career path?
Yes, I'll take that question. We got it from two sources. First, 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 the, one of the independent outside experts, they did some surveys of the academy, the staff there. And that information about having access to exercise facilities and additional training that you might not get in the field, a better work schedule, that information, we leverage from those, that, those reports. But in the process, in the last two months, we've interviewed a number of academies. So we got a cross-section. There was some, there was some academy staff persons that agreed with that, but there were some that said the biggest hurdle is the financial losses that they lose from getting overtime in the field. When you work in patrol, you know, you have, you know, you work overtime, you have special assignments and things like that. And I kind of got a, I remember talking to one instructor and we got kind of an estimate of like, hey, I'm losing like maybe $1,500 a month by coming here. So I'm losing money, which affects my family. And, but, you know, but then again, too, there's some of the trade-off is better schedule, more, more opportunities to hone those educational skills while you're at the academy.
Thanks. So it sounds though, as if in, both in terms of the benefits as well as the disincentives, you were really talking to those who are already, who have opted in, they have become instructors.
We also spoke with, we also did conversations with other officers who were in groups, union membership and leadership, and folks who aren't academy instructors as well.
Yeah, because I guess I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be productive to kind of open that question up to the people who aren't currently serving as instructors to see what's, you know, what are, whether those factors remain true about why we might not be interested in opting into those positions.
And some of that was research that instructors did, because they would have somebody that they thought would be a really good candidate to come and teach and had a lot to share recruits. And they'd say, hey, why don't you come over here? And they, you know, I'm kind of happy where I am. Financially, it works for me. Time-wise, it works for me. There's a physical aspect of, you know, the physical fitness test that, that, you know, doesn't work for me. So some of the instructors try and get other people that they think would be good for the recruits, and that's the feedback they get from the offices they're speaking with. And we've heard that from some of the folks we talked to.
Thank you. That's helpful. So there were, there were some really good recommendations, I thought, throughout your report about ways to integrate community voices into the curriculum as the course is unfolding. And I understand, I understand that there is an extended, the proposal is to have an extended period of time in the community, but I'm still really intrigued and interested in the recommendations that, that came out of this report, to have, to have those outside content experts actually be part of the, part of the ongoing curriculum. And so I guess my question for our consultants. On page 11 of your report, you've made the comment, except for the history of policing and race in Austin, there does not appear to be any intentional or clearly articulated plans to incorporate outside content experts. And so I, I wanted to offer you the opportunity to talk a little bit about that and then to switch to APD and, and see why or why that is not the plan moving forward. It would seem to me it would, it would address a variety of the issues that have been identified. One, that kind of death by PowerPoint, I'm using an expression that was in the report itself, not one I came up with, but, you know, having that change in speakers, I think, is important. Having that, those authentic voices from lived experience makes the curriculum more, more powerful to those hearing it. I think it addresses some of the questions, some of the points you raised, Mr. Linsky, about a variety of learning styles. To me, I always find that different learning styles sometimes respond, respond, you know, that it's important to have different speakers sometimes in there to hit, to really reach out to people with different learning styles. So would you see the APD's response and kind of plan moving forward to have, have most of the community voices be part of that post-academy community experience responsive to the, to the recommendations that you made about what would appear to be more of a seamless integration of those community voices into the curriculum?
So, so we, we looked at what initially was there and also it had already been suggested and was under consideration by the APD to bring in, there's policing. And we, and then it was kind of an open book. We also, they, they're looking for other voices and we strongly suggest there are other voices. I just did my fourth case with the Innocence Project, and it was a case in Philadelphia that Kroll did, where a young man was shot by police officers and sent 19 years in prison for sexual assault he didn't commit. The firearm that was found on him was, belonged to a police officer. It's a travesty of a case. Those voices should be in the police academy. There are civil rights activists who have a different lens. So Chief Manley and I, I've seen him across the years at PERF or IACP functions, we get to go to places where academics and people with outside thoughts on restorative justice and people with thoughts on victimization and criminology get to have conversations and we get different eyesights and thoughts and, and ideas. And hopefully we take them back to our departments and let them grow. And I would encourage Austin to get those voices into the academy as early and as often as they can. I would bring in your harshest critics and have them explain why they are harsh critics. And I would bring in the civil rights attorney who has probably, your corporation council has written numerous checks to for issues and concerns, and I would have him come in or her come in and explain what they look at and why they are being effective and what they need you to do as a police officer so that they don't sue the department and sue you. I had Trucey Allah, who was a young man that I chased through the streets of Boston, is a gang member who sold crack cocaine and carried guns. Trucey did a shooting, went to prison, found religion, became a member of the Nation of Islam, and Trucey became one of my strongest partners in trying to help re-educate gang members coming out of the justice system to be prepared for society. And he would come in and talk about his journey to our police officers. And some of them have never experienced some of the challenges Trucey and his group he grew up with experienced. And the more we can have them build relationships with different opinions and ideas in the community, the better off we are. And I, I just, I just don't want to say we have a course that someone came in and spoke for two hours about issues on this particular group, because that doesn't work. That's a course. And what Chief, we hear from Chief Manley and leadership of APD and the manager's office is they want to change the culture where the understanding starts in the academy and continues a lifelong learning lesson on the street. And as loud and intense voices outside of policing you can get in the academy, we support that all loudly.
Thank you. And it would seem to me that, that you really make that point, if you have those community voices integrated throughout the whole academy, right? Then, then it's, then you're getting your learning, not just from officers, but also from those community voices. And I think it, it would send an important message about the way we construct learning. I guess Chief, Chief Gay, Chief Manley, could you talk about how you're, how you're using those suggestions to inform moving forward?
Absolutely. That was a great question. I, I want to totally agree with how you're perceiving the transformation that we're looking towards. We do anticipate that the community voices need to be heard throughout the academy. What we presented was real basic to the recommendations, but we do incorporate the 30 hours, the pre-work that will happen before the academy. But we will, we do want that to be incorporated throughout the academy. And as Dan mentioned, it's just not a check-in-the-box saying, hey, we heard from the community here. We truly believe that it needs to be incorporated. I believe one of the councilmembers asked, what did we learn from Kroll and other presentations? We learned that through the community video review panel and others, that they bring a lens into our environment that we haven't seen before. And it is so critical that our officers understand different perspectives. And so it is critical for it to be integrated throughout the academy, and that is our goal.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Gay. So do you see the curriculum moving toward the suggestion that was made in the Kroll report to have, have those courses be co-taught by APD instructors in cooperation with appropriate subject matter experts or community allies?
Absolutely. And we were, we're doing a review of all the courses and any course that we believe can be co-taught. We We will be doing that. I believe in Kroll's report, it listed over 15 different entities that we are trying to have conversations with, as well as looking for others as well.
Yeah. And it looked to me like those were community groups that would be useful. I think, I think there probably are also some other subject area experts, both in our universities and in some of the organizations active here in the Capitol and, and others. So I would assume that that is just a very, just a snapshot of a list.
Absolutely.
Of those who might be considered. I had a few other questions, but I, I will conclude here for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you. I have two questions, two sets of questions, I guess. The first question just relates to, I wanted to note, I think it was slide 11, the, the continued under representation, pretty serious under representation of women in the academy. I think it's at 17% or something like that. So my question for you all is when you reviewed the curriculum and you reviewed other aspects of how the training academy operates, did you identify particular issues that were impacting the interest and ability for women to participate? And I, you know, I have not read through your report, so I apologize if you've got a section of your report that speaks to that. But I would like to understand specifically what you all uncovered with regard to participation of, of women in the academy and, and police. And of course, that's one aspect of the diversity that we need in our police department.
So initially, when we looked back at where females were leaving the academy, it was around a couple of locations. One was Fight Day and the Stress Reaction Training where they, you know, went into Fight Day and weren't trained on how to defend themselves, how to throw a jab, how to defend, how to put your, your feet together, how to move. And it was just an assessment as to where they were and their ability to be involved in a fight. A lot of people when faced with that, especially females and cadets of color, didn't go through that process. They decided to leave the academy and part ways at that program. Has changed. There has been some staff that were moved. There was an indication some staff appear to be more aggressive with female recruits in that process and they are no longer instructors at the academy. In fact, I don't even know if they're employed at APD anymore. And there is now a lead female instructor who is a Pacific Asian woman, who is now in charge of the physical fitness and the physical training program. And we've seen better numbers in the recent class where we didn't see the dropout of female cadets. So it looks like that was, in this first reaction training upfront and the Fight Day were two of the contributing factors that were impacting retention of female recruits.
Okay. Thank you. Does your analysis identify, is there, and I, you know, apologize, I will go and study it, but does your analysis and then your final report that's upcoming for us, will it include specific discussion of the impact on, on women, both in recruiting and the academy? In other words, you just provided some, some very interesting and helpful information. Will that kind of information be called out in your report so that if I?
Yes.
Okay. So, so if I'm interested in specifically the impact on women, then I will be able to read that somewhere in your report.
Yes. Both previously, what was going on and, and what, what has changed and the differences and the, and Rick did a lot of analysis and follow up with folks who had left the training process to see the reasons why. And I believe we, we pointed that out initially in our initial report, but we will go into more detail in the final.
Okay. And there, you had a slide in there with that, about the impact of injuries or the, actually, yeah, I guess the number of injuries on cadets. I didn't see it mentioned specifically on that slide. Are women disproportionately experiencing injuries?
That's similar circumstance. So Fight Day and the Stress Reaction Training, we were seeing women and cadets of color who were experiencing injuries. Now, there's also been a change in the tracking of injuries at the academy. So where injuries may have been unreported before, if it wasn't a major injury, now it's our understanding that the command, it requires all injuries to be documented. But we did see more injuries with females and recruits of color in the old Fight Day and, and Stress Reaction Training programs before they phased out those programs for team building and will to win, which the last will to win with the new, our leadership, we didn't see the injuries that occurred previously. And we hope with the self-defense that that will continue.
Okay. And then one more question related to this is, so what is y'all's thinking about the, the reason behind the, I think it was 17% of women as part of the, as part of the, I think 144th cadet class? Why is it that low? And was that, was that within the scope of what you were looking at? I'd just like to understand that.
Just wanted to see your question, Councilor. So the, the class that's currently recruited for those results, is that the?
Well, it was on your slide deck. It was a result on your slide deck. You were, you were looking at the composition of the class for purposes of determining diversity of the class. And, you know, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think it was slide 11 perhaps or?
I could speak to that briefly.
Slide 11.
Councilmember, I think the, well, I think one thing we were pointing out was that the diversity of the planned 144th cadet class was actually better than in past years. And it was considered one of the more, it's considered one of the more diverse cadet classes. Now, it's true that the female cadet numbers are low there, but 17% is actually an increase over what the, the typical numbers are, which I believe are typically in like the 10% range. So, you know, obviously there's a lot of work to do to get more females into the academy. But this has been something that I think police departments throughout the country are struggling with for a number of reasons I think Dan has talked about. But that number, 17%, is actually, if I understand, actually higher than historically what is typically the case.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure as we're analyzing our curriculum and the, and the, and operations of the academy, we are doing so with a very thorough and critical eye, as well as a very sensitive eye as to the, as to what's going on that, that contributes to the barriers to women participating. And I certainly understand that there's a lot, a lot of different factors and training academy, academy is not the only thing. There's a lot of factors about why women may or may not go into, you know, into policing. But I would like to make sure, I want to make sure that we really did a thorough analysis of, of that aspect and the fact that 17% is better than 10% is great, but that's still not very good. And so I would just like to make sure that we did that level of analysis. And that, and so my question really is, did, I mean, did, did you, I just want to understand, I want to understand that you use best practice practices, that you, of course, used your extensive background and experience, but that you also consulted with women that are involved in policing who have an extensive background and can look at these kinds of things through their lens.
Well, let me just say that the issue you're talking about really goes to recruitment and recruitment. And that is going to be part of our Phase B.
Okay.
Part of Phase B. So that really is not part of our, the current assessment we're doing now. We are touching upon these issues a little bit to the extent that we're looking at issues like diversity at the academy, but we'll be digging much deeper into that in Phase B. And one of our experts, Dr. Cassie Fields, along with Rick Brown in particular, will be looking very deeply in, you know, what roadblocks exist for recruitment efforts to women, to people of color, to, you know, other groups that have traditionally been perhaps not as robust in the membership of the academy. And that, those are things we will be looking at much more deeply in Phase B.
Okay. That, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. And, and I, and I, I'm sure that as you look at recruitment, that'll provide some insight as, as to any impact that the actual training process has on recruitment or the reception of the, of the training process has on recruitment. Okay. I wanted to ask one other question. And this follows up on, I think it was Councilmember Kelly may have asked this question. And so this may be a question for you, City Manager, or perhaps for you, Chief Manley. I'm trying to understand what else needs to happen to get us to the point where we have made the necessary changes to curriculum and we're ready to restart, restart with another, to restart training with another cadet class? And what recommendation do you have at this point if you do? And if you don't have a recommendation at this point, do you expect to make a recommendation at some point? I'm just not clear on, on what, what our next step is to address that question.
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, first step is getting this feedback from you and your colleagues. We do believe that we have put forward a robust work, piece of body of work that not only addresses some immediate concerns and recommendations that have been presented and working with our community to really look at those longer term strategies that we're going to use. And so we are going to be taking this feedback and then working with you and your colleagues about what that next step could be, both with us management and within the department are ready to move as, as soon as possible to get this academy started again. We would just bring forward a budget recommendation, a budget amendment to council. And so that would be the council action that would really trigger us to be able to start that class.
And when do you expect to bring forward a budget amendment? Or are you waiting to have the conversation with us first?
I'm waiting for this conversation, but we, we would be ready even next cycle, but I want to make sure that we're doing so in a way that moves at the pace that you're comfortable with.
Okay. And then if, you know, if, if the council is, we all have, we all still have a lot of questions. So I'm, I'm not trying to presuppose that anyone is ready at this point. I'm just trying to understand the path because I know there's a certain amount of timeframe that has to be built in. So even if, even if the, this, the council felt like the appropriate changes have been made and we were ready to proceed, how much, how much time does that take between a decision to proceed and actually starting a new cadet class?
I'll let the chief or chief of staff answer that.
Certainly. Once we get the go ahead to start a class, we would be looking at a four to six week window to go ahead and get that class underway. We would need time to contact the recruits, time for them to relocate those that need to, time to be, or get an orientation underway. So there would need to be a, a lead up time to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kitchen, I think if I remember correctly, the series, the mayor had to step off the dais, so I'm going to be making the next round of calls. I believe it was Councilmember Casar and then Councilmember Fuentes.
Right. Well, I, I appreciate the, the work that y'all have laid out that has already gotten done. That's really important and I appreciate the takeaway that you mentioned, Chief, about all of the recommendations being acceptable to the police department. And so I'm not going to focus, I'm not going to focus too much on the things that have been agreed to because I think we've discussed that a good bit. But for the consultants, for my first question, I am interested in parts of your report where it seemed like there might be some daylight or differences because I want to understand those or understand if they're not a difference. So I do appreciate how in many parts of the report we list the changes done so that there's not Fight Day anymore or that folks won't be wearing military camouflage at the academy. There's a part where you mentioned that there will be less of the, of the yelling and screaming directly one-on-one at cadets. And those changes, I think, are, are important and I appreciate that those, it sounds like those have gone into effect and those are agreed to. But then for the folks at Kroll, part of your report says that the department has been reluctant, this is not my words, this is just from the report that's been delivered to us. It's, your, your report says that APD has been reluctant to embrace some of the recommendations provided concerning course content and teaching methods and a stronger reluctance to change the paramilitary nature of the academy in a fundamental, in any fundamental way. Could you help, as we try to sort out what things we change short-term and change long-term, I think it's just important for us to know where, where and which recommendations you all have made that you as consultants think are the right thing to do, but that we, either the department or the city disagrees with or, or, or are reluctant to do so that we can determine ourselves whether they're recommendations we take or recommendations we don't take. But can you help us understand what some of the recommendations are you've made that, that have not been implemented and what it would take to, to change some of the, the nature of the academy in that more fundamental way?
I don't know of any recommendations that we made that were not accepted by the PD. I can tell you that during the process, there are different voices. So we spoke with a number of people inside the academy, outside the academy, inside the department, outside the department. And we heard from different people, from the way, where they're sitting and the way they, they think. And sometimes there is, the senior leadership of the city and senior leadership of the department can be on one point of thought and, and have communicated their thoughts on that. And sometimes the implementation is, you know, not quite understood. And somebody takes what somebody said and is, is waiting. For, for example, the, to their credit, they brought in an outside expert to look at the academic, academy program and have an education professional look at how they were training recruits. And that person was brought in at a commander level with the understanding that, you know, they would speak as a commander and that they would, you know, have, if they gave you a suggestion, that that was more than a suggestion, it was something you needed to take to heart and, and evaluate. And if you're a police officer who's grown up in an organization and no one's giving you clear instruction that the civilian is there to help you improve and that you're supposed to, you know, treat them as if you would a commander giving the instruction, there's also a, and I don't want to talk cop talk, but there's a, something in Texas law that says somewhere that sworn police officers can't report to civilians. And there's, sometimes I used to have it in my own police department where police officers feel that they are different than civilians and, and every one of policing is trying to work hard to change that around the country where we don't give dispatches the respect they deserve because they're not police officers. And I explained to my police officers that we all take multiple fill-in-the-blank tests. And that's the difference between being a dispatcher and a, a police officer sometimes. And, you know, they are just as valuable on the streets as you are. And any police officer's been in a hard event and had a dispatcher bring help to them can tell you that, that, that's true. So there was some disconnect on what the mission was and sometimes people are waiting for, you know, somebody to tell them exactly what the mission was. And I think we were able to hear that from both sides and inform APD leadership that some of the communication wasn't as effective as thought. And that's why I believe the, the new recommendation has the civilian advisor at a higher level who's reporting now, I believe, directly to an assistant chief or to where they speak from the chief. And I had that in the Boston Police Department. Dr. Anthony Bragger was an expert I brought in and I had him helping with a homicide project for me. And I had a homicide, Davis and I had a homicide commander who wasn't going to listen to a civilian because he's a police officer. And we said, well, no, he's our, he works for us as a superintendent basically on our staff. And let me, let us clarify this. And the commander didn't want to do that, so they were no longer the commander. So there, there might have been a need in some of our conversations to have people, and, and sometimes, you know, we spoke with an individual who says, well, I'm not going to put up with all this stuff they're trying to do to change the academy. And we said, oh, what is that? And they said, well, they're trying to get rid of physical fitness. And we said, well, no, we're actually looking to, you know, what do you think of this? Oh, well, that's a good idea. Well, they're trying to do this, that they want to make it less, you know, stressful out there. Well, what do you think about having stress on the PT field and not when you teach a class? Oh, I agree with that 100%. So some of this is, police officers. of this is, um, police officers, my experience, hate two things. They hate change, any change at all, and they hate the way things are. And sometimes we need to, as leaders or departments, explain to the officers why we're doing things. And I can tell you from the passion of the instructors, when they understand the why, um, they're invested wholeheartedly in making sure they, they get recruits that can go out and police the community effectively. Uh, they, they, they were trying to figure out how they could make it work. So I don't think we gave any recommendations. The PD said absolutely not. Uh, there are some things that they said, oh, that's a great idea, but we're going to need some time on that. And, you know, I'll, uh, I'll be happy to push back on that, uh, if, if, if that's appropriate. But I, I don't think there's anything that we were heard, no, we, we, we can't do that. Uh, we heard from community what they thought the academy should, should be doing. Um, and most of the things we talked to the community about, they agreed with our, our thoughts and ideas. And that's what we put to the table on the, on the report.
Thanks, Mr. Liskel. Let me make sure that I under- understand sort of the, um, wh- what it is you mean in the report then that y'all sent to us. Um, because, you know, what I, what I read to you was straight, of course, straight from your report, but what, tell me if this is right. What you're saying is that when you all said that APD has been reluctant, uh, to embrace some of your recommendations and even stronger reluctance to change some of the paramilitary nature of the academy, what you mean, what you mean in that sentence is that there was that reluctance, but now you don't see that reluctance?
Let, and let me, I'll speak briefly just, uh, to clarify, uh, what we were referring to there, council member, was the, um, there were recommendations made, for example, in a number of the independent reports that we, we also reviewed and assessed, like Dr. Villanueva's report, for example, Dr. Ferguson's report on curriculum review. And they also, they talked a lot about the kind of the paramilitary nature of the academy. And their recommendations were that there needs to be kind of a transition to a, a less regimented academy and more of an adult learning model. And it was certainly with respect to many of the recommendations, at least when we first began to look into this, the recommendations that they were making, Dr. Villanueva, Ferguson and others, um, those recommendations that we believe that the department was reluctant to adapt. And part of it was similar to, we, we had mentioned that, um, you know, they're in the process of, of replacing Dr. Villanueva. But in the meantime, when we were talking to instructors, we were trying to figure out, okay, have you looked at Dr. V's report? Have you embraced some of those recommendations? What are you doing to try to, uh, put more adult learning content into curriculum? And the typical response at that time was, well, we're waiting for a new, whoever replaces Dr. Villanueva and waiting for guidance. In the meantime, we're just making sure that the courses comply with the state mandates. So it was kind of in that, that realm that we, I think, were commenting in our findings section, that there was some reluctance to embrace, embrace that. And I think what Dan's suggesting is that at least as far as our recommendations go, because we're trying to basically build on our recommendations. Look, we agree with Dr. Villanueva and Dr. Ferguson in this area. There does need to be more adult learning. There does need to be more active learning and, and, and so forth. And I think the department is saying, you know what? We agree with that and we're, we're going to go there. And part of the way they're going there is by replacing, um, Dr. Villanueva, which I believe they've hired now a Dr. Anne, uh, uh, kind of botched her name, the, the new replacement for, for her. And, um, and that that person will now have the proper backing and support, the proper rank and authority to work with and hand, in a hands-on way with academy supervisors and instructors to really help them as they go forward, build in much more of this adult learning concept. So it kind of comes full circle that way, but, uh, just, I hope that clarifies a little bit, maybe that gap that you were seeing in the report.
That's useful. Thank you. Uh, I hope the answer to this one is, is quick. I, I really appreciate the recommendation, uh, and the acceptance of the recommendation for us to have someone, uh, present and monitoring the 144th class, uh, to, to see how these recommendations go and, uh, to ensure fidelity to this work. Is, is that, uh, a person or group that we plan on bringing on board before that 144th class begins? I know that sometimes it takes us time to bring folks on board. So how would that timeline work?
That is something we're looking at right now as far as whether that would be a partnership with a governmental entity that would want to come in and do kind of like an oversight auditing role, or whether that would be a, a private consultant that would come in and do that type of audit. So that is something that is still under review. What we're saying is that we do agree that there should be some mechanism by which there is, uh, auditing of, of, of the classes, some of the classes, all the classes, so that there can be accountability to these changes that we are committing to make. Um, but as of today, we have not yet identified what that looks like. Um, and then of course, depending upon the complexity of that, um, and the cost of that, that could be another item that would have to go through the procurement process. So, uh, that's where we're at right now as far as assessing how we'll approach that recommendation.
Thank you, chief. And, and manager, uh, whatever we can do to get that in place and, and time for the beginning, whenever that is, um, I think that that, uh, would be important. Uh, and I appreciate that recommendation. My, my last question, um, is, you know, I just want to ground us back into, um, what, how we got here in the first place and the resolution that was first passed on this. And so I just want to, uh, you know, I think everybody has stated here that we want to see an academy up and going, and we want to see an academy up and going where we don't have reports from the, from cadets or from the equity office or from others that read like some of the reports that we've gotten. And so I want to ground us in that, read a, just a snippet from one of the reports that we received, uh, and ask, uh, Kroll, uh, sort of the last question here. But again, these aren't my words. This is just from one of the reports that we got from the equity office. Um, uh, so from the equity office, as part of the report says, that during interviews conducted as a part of this assessment, multiple cadets alleged that the training academy fostered a dangerous and ineffective learning environment that degraded, degrades and injures highly qualified candidates, many of whom decide to resign for fear of permanent physical or mental injury. Multiple cadets expressed concern about training staff promoting rhetoric antagonistic towards people experiencing homelessness. Uh, dangerous training tactics were employed, described by cadets with military backgrounds as, quote, "worse than anything I went through in U.S. military training amid numerous valid concerns over testing practices, unsafe physical tests, racist and sexist language, physical abuse, forced resignations, inequitable employment outcomes, and a toxic training culture driven by an us versus them mindset. City and APD leaders should rebuild the training academy and implement structural reforms." So given that that's what the report we got from our equity office, um, what I'm interested in from Kroll is, do you believe that, um, with the recommendations you provided today, that if those are implemented with fidelity, that at the end of the 144th class, if there were a similar report conducted, that we wouldn't receive that, that sort of a, a report? Or do you think that, or, or is it with the recommendations you provide today and the ones that you'll provide at the end of the month, that you think that we can get to a 40, 144th class, that if we had the equity office do a similar analysis, we would get a, a very different analysis?
So I think if we look at where you were, uh, when those recruits and, and some of those issues came forward, I think we would look at what's happened since then, because APD, to its credit, has done some things without being told to do, and has made some changes that were significant to address those very issues. Um, we found that there was also some more work to do. And we gave the recommendations that we feel are short-term. But I would caution that there is no perfect academy class and there never can be. There has to be a continuing process of evaluating training, adjusting training, looking to see what worked and what didn't work. That's one of the reasons I wanted to bring back recruiters who, when people leave the academy, recruiters have spent six to nine months recruiting officers, getting to know them, building trust, getting them into the academy process. So if somebody leaves, they are probably trusted people who can have a real conversation about why did you leave? I, I was physically abused during fight day. Uh, we, we, uh, didn't like fight day. Uh, I can tell you APD leadership, uh, from the academy didn't like fight day and they changed it. Um, they changed it to will to win. We evaluated that and we thought that that was good, but wasn't great. And we've come up with suggestions for what we think will get them to great. So I would say based on the work already done, our suggestions for short-term milestones, they could begin an academy class. And then as we recommend, somebody should be there on site to hold the feet to the fire, to, uh, the staff that is going to have to live with our recommendations and figure out how they work. And sometimes, it wouldn't be the first time in my career that I gave recommendations that don't work in real life, and they have to be changed and adjusted with people who are on the ground who might have better ideas. And I think having that process and making this a test class where we, 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 we test, you know, fly it and, and, and see how it works and see what's community thoughts of what happened in this class? What are the instructors' thoughts? What are the cadets' thoughts? What are the supervisors who have these officers come out and using, uh, them to fill their shifts on the street? What are their thoughts? And we can evaluate what worked and what didn't work. Hopefully put our long-term recommendations in place and then see if there's other ones that need to be put in there and adjusted. I hope that was a short answer to your question and hopefully was, cut to the info you will look for.
I, I, I appreciate, I'm not looking for the perfect class. I recognize that there are lots of parts of the city every day that come before us where there are imperfections and problems that we all have to solve. But I think we can all agree that what, uh, what in those prior reports is, is, is worse than that. And, and of course, many of it is allegation. Um, but the question is just, do the recommendations that you've presented, in addition to the things that have already been done, does that get you to a place where you feel confident that if a class restarted, we wouldn't get that level of shocking of a report? Or is it that there are other things that you are still trying to come up with, um, for your final report that is upcoming?
I, I, I'll speak for myself and I, I think I speak for our team. We feel confident that if those measures are met, you will have, uh, the process of an effective academy training program.
The ones that you've presented today, to be clear?
Correct.
And, and if I could chime in on that, one of the other things we're doing is, uh, we have, uh, earlier and we talked about some of the other members of our team. Uh, we have Dr. Robin Engel and, and, uh, she's going to work with us to do some data mining too. And to let, we're going to dig down and see exactly where, uh, certain cadets are falling out of the process in training and the different, different, looking for trends and patterns. So we're going to build that into this next report, uh, too. And that's something that we'll be able to continue to monitor moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. And by the way, hang on one second. It's, it's almost four o'clock. I understand from the clerk, we have a hard stop at five. So we're going to continue this conversation. It may be that we don't get to pick up the executive session until Thursday. Uh, but let's see how it goes. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. My question has been covered. So no question for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Poole.
Thanks. Real quick, Spencer, um, city manager, I wanted just to get some, if you could revisit what you said about, um, you would be ready to return to the council, I think you said next cycle, with a budget amendment for the next class. Next cycle, were you talking about next meeting, next fiscal year? What, what were you meaning by next cycle?
The next, uh, council meeting. But again, I want, I want to get this feedback and then I'll, I'll follow up with, uh, individual council members and make sure that we're ready to implement that. But, uh, again, we would be ready to put that on the agenda.
Okay, great. So that would be our next meeting in March?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. That's all I had.
Councilmember Rettoria.
Hi, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is, um, what do you see, you know, there's a lot about community training and community policing. What did you see the cadet doing different than they have done before when it comes to community policing and training?
So I'd like to, what the Austin experience would be, would be more exposure to the community, um, and the history of what police and the community relations were before. Uh, that recruit puts a badge on his chest or her chest. Uh, if I had my draw this, but this is down the road, I, I, I would try to put recruits in community, uh, facing assignments where there are walking beats or bicycle units, uh, where they're not chasing 911 calls and in high-speed pursuits and, you know, running on adrenaline, where they're getting to know the, the owners of the grocery stores and the bodegas and, you know, what the challenges are in the, in the schools and get them to know people first. That's going to take the training, the formal training of being a guardian, uh, and, and enforcement officer, uh, and hopefully get them to engage the community first and then come back later for your intermediate training and we'll talk about active shooter response and, you know, advanced domestic violence cases. And then we put you in police cars to chase 911 calls, but you first learned how to, I worked very hard as a police commander, police trainer. We train cops how to play themselves when they're talking to a subject, how to assess if someone's armed, how to ask questions to get somebody to trip themselves up. Uh, I sent a police officer to a community meeting and said, can you go up and take care of the community meeting for me? And I got there, I went about an hour into it and 25 of my community members are on a table talking about policing the neighborhood. And I had a police officer at the back door standing like this. I said, David, what are you doing? He said, you told me to guard the community meeting, boss. I had to teach him he wasn't there to guard the community meeting, that he was there to be part of the community meeting. And if we give those recruits the instruction and we give them the tools to go out there and, and meet and engage the community and, you know, we have to work, we got to keep police officers safe, but the majority of work they do is, you know, mundane and, and writing reports and, and, and helping people in crisis. So if we train them for that, um, all for training them as the guardian up front, assignments that can be, you know, less cops on TV and more community policing, and then bring them back in and train them to be the warrior. Because it, in my experience, when, when terrorists bomb my city, we need to have that response and officers who are willing to go into harm's way. And I think it's best of both worlds.
I, I really appreciate that, uh, you know, I, we were one of, uh, our neighborhood was one of the first to embrace community policing. And it was really just, the outcome was just really great. You know, we reduced the crime, we, we, uh, didn't have the youth gang member problem that other part of the town was having. So, uh, I really am one of those, uh, council members that would embrace community policing. And I'm just glad that you're going to be, uh, that part of that is going to be part of the training of our officers. We really need to get this implemented, uh, chief, because this is, uh, is very important to the community.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some of the thoughts that I've had have been covered by a number of my colleagues. And so I just wanted to express that I also am thinking forward into what does the oversight continue to look like? How do we ensure that the training, once it gets back going, um, is fresh, is up to date? Um, do we have certain targets that every X number of years, we need to be going through processes like this to understand that we're still delivering content to cadets that is timely and fresh? And so we don't end up in a situation where the materials are so old that they're way out of date and not helpful to the community. So I do want to make sure we know what those steps are before proceeding with, um, approving another class. Um, and I also care a lot about community engagement to make sure that people feel like the ones who are most affected by policing have a voice in this process, as I know that they've had an opportunity to do through the last few months, um, that we don't lose sight of that and that we continue to provide that forum for people who are, are trying to train, to tell us the information that cadets really need to understand. So I want to make sure that we think about that before moving forward and really understand what that is before we as a council, um, move forward with the materials and, and the next sets of training.
That's very helpful, council member. Thanks for that feedback.
Okay. Colleagues. Um, my, I think when we, when we went through the class and talking about the cadet classes earlier, we had, I believe, made a commitment to the community not to do the cadet classes until we thought we could do them, uh, right, until we thought we could do them, them better. Uh, and, and I think that's still the promise that we have to the, to the, to the community. Uh, I appreciate the review that's going on here. I appreciate all those steps. I appreciate that comment to, as I was last question. Um, thinking of this next class, uh, as a, as a test class makes sense to me because a lot of these things, I think you're not going to really be able to know how they translate, uh, until you actually see how, how they, how they are implemented. Uh, and it is probably the kind of thing that, that evolves over time. I don't know if it's possible to, to live stream, uh, the, the classes, put a camera in the back of the room and just put a stream somewhere so that people in the community that wanted to, to watch. so that people in the community that wanted to watch how classes are being taught in real time. I don't know if that violates any of the protocols or isn't practical, but that might be in keeping with thinking about this as a test class when it starts. But I do know, and I agree with Councilmember Renteria and some others that have spoken, Councilmember Kitchen, I think, earlier. If we have made a quantum change in what we're doing, if it's going to be materially different, I do believe that having cadet classes gives us an opportunity for cultural change agents and an opportunity to be able to affect the kind of cultural change that we want to see. Now, part of it, managers, is I'd like to have your assessment based on these recommendations. I mean, do you think, because ultimately, you know, over the course of this, there's going to be kind of a change in APD leadership. So I think folks will be looking to you to be the guarantor that if we went forward with a class, it's going to result in a different kind of class and move us toward a different kind of culture. So your recommendation, whether you think we're ready or when we're ready to be able to do this, I think will be significant for the community to hear. Everyone would like to have a class sooner than later, but only to the degree that it would be materially different. Mayor Proten.
Thank you. I think, much like a lot of my colleagues have expressed, a lot of my questions have been answered. I think the one thing that I wonder if we're putting the appropriate amount of attention to is how we got here in the first place, the things that have transpired, the reports, the data, like how we got here in the first place, what the problematic elements were. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. Taking the opportunity to see, you know, that we can get this right and do it really well, I don't think it should take away the opportunity to recognize how we got here in the first place. And some of the data, you know, throughout the course of this process, you know, while Kroll was doing the work, they were doing, the community members were doing the work that they're doing, some of the data that's been presented to us even as a result of that about racial profiling and some of the other really problematic elements, including, I think somebody might have said today, and I'll follow up with the actual question, but if people were actually fired, removed from their positions as a result of bad behavior, trusted individuals who were training our cadets, I'd like very much to get a little more insight into what happened there. But then, one of the other things that early on, when we were trying to put together this resolution, something we took into consideration was, what is the appropriate order of operations? Is it cadet class? Is it recruitment? Is it, you know, we were asking the questions, because we don't know. And I'm so grateful that we have the professionals on scene. That to say, though, I don't want us to forget why we got here, how we got here in the first place. I also would like to ask some questions that, you know, early on for me were problematic and I haven't heard us discuss them. My hope is that maybe this is, you know, a part of the next phase. But there were some problematic disqualification codes, for example. I heard about a DQ code that talked about hair. You were DQ'd if you had locks. There were a group of black officers who got that fixed. That to say, the fact that they had to repeatedly ask to get that fixed, that's a very racist, problematic disqualification code. The fact that we weren't, we didn't address it faster is a problem. I've heard some concerns about DQ codes that have to do with people's personal credit. I'd like very much to make certain that as we are doing these assessments and we are really revolutionizing how we do this, we make sure that we ask all those hard questions about the recruitment component and the disqualification codes and make certain that everything is fair. I heard a story one time where one cadet had this series of events, the other had another series of events. It just so happens, the white cadet was pushed far forward, the black cadet was disqualified. I just want to make sure that we don't lose the opportunity to make certain that things happen in a way that they're unilateral, the same level of expectation for every cadet. And things like, you know, a group of white men making an assessment about whether or not you're qualified to be a police officer because of black hair that they don't know anything about. So, but I just want to make certain that, you know, I certainly don't want to make, I don't want to make, I don't want to introduce any further problematic elements to these conversations, but I want to make certain that we are having very difficult decisions or, I'm sorry, difficult conversations. I just want to make sure that we do that. So I think the last thing that I heard that gives me pause is the conversation about resumption of cadet classes. And Mayor, while I can appreciate your ideology about a test class, these are people's children. These are people's parents. These are, I don't want to test them out. I don't want them to be put in a position that could be harmful. So I just want to make certain that the singular element of consideration before we resume a cadet class is that everybody will be safe, including our cadets.
I certainly didn't mean to imply otherwise.
Oh, you didn't. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. Thank you. You didn't. I just want to make sure I was clear. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with what you said. Anything else on this, guys? On this issue, policing manager?
Just to close this out, again, thanking the Kroll team for this thoughtful assessment of the work. Again, it's preliminary of the work done to date to design our curriculum and training with the Police Academy, which really places this priority on diversity and equity. We're also thankful to all the community voices that helped shape several of these recommendations, particularly the work of the video review channel. And as we've said before, the next steps in this process will be receiving the final report control this month. We're going to make sure that we see all the short-term measures are outlined and implemented. We need to have a clear path and plan and timeline for implementing the long-term recommendations in this preliminary report. And then we'll be gathering additional feedback from the community, including our city community task force that will be incorporated with this feedback. Again, thank you all, Mayor and council, for your important engagement in this conversation today. And then, when we do feel like we have achieved these objectives, we'll be able to move forward with placing a budget amendment on the agenda for your consideration to restart the academy, but keeping you informed of these specific timelines as we move forward. Again, really appreciate this conversation today, a lot more to come. But want to thank our consultants, Director Musketin and our Deputy City Manager, Nury Rar, for really spearheading this work. Thank you all.
Thank you. And you'll come back at the next meeting with both of the budget amendment that would enable us to act, but your recommendation on whether you think we're ready to do that.
I can certainly do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this policing issue in front of us now? Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, thank you so much. Obviously, there's an incredible amount of work that went into even getting this far. And I'm really hopeful for the outcome that will come across with our future Police Academy. I do want to address something that you said earlier, Mayor, where you were talking about livestreaming the academy. I would hope that maybe we could consult with legal about that. I know that things can be touchy and I don't want to put us into some sort of precarious position without getting their opinion on that. And while I do believe in transparency, I think it's a very important thing for a city government to have. I just want to make sure that if we do move forward with that, we do it with consulting, with legal first.
If I could chime in on that from Kroll. One of, you know, we have some concerns about livestreaming in an educational environment. You know, it could stifle learning. Besides the privacy concerns that you would probably be talking with your legal department about, cadets enter the academy, like Dan said earlier, they have different strengths, different weaknesses, different learning abilities. And if they know they're going to be livestreamed, that could hinder learning and class participation. And that's something that we're concerned about. And then, when it comes time to have those discussions, those open and honest discussions, especially about race and gender, D E and I issues, that could keep those individuals from speaking out, knowing that their conversations and their shared life experiences could be out for the public to see. So, you know, as consultants, we have that concern in addition to what legal concerns you might identify. But we have the concern about how it could hinder learning in some of these important classes we're talking about implementing moving forward.
Thank you for that. Chief Manley, did you have anything you might want to add based on your knowledge and background about the possibility of livestreaming something like this?
I actually believe the comments that I would have made were just addressed that we wouldn't want to do anything that would inhibit that free flow, that discussion and all of that because people were fearful. And so I just would never want to take that out of that environment because I think that's where the true learning is going to take place, especially with all these changes we're working to implement when we want our cadets to be open and free with each other about their lived experiences. And so that would be something we would have to address. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And Mayor, I really do appreciate that suggestion. I just know, coming from a public safety background myself, that might be a really peculiar situation to put people into. And so I want to make sure that we look at it from every angle before we offer it. And again, I am a big proponent of being transparent in government mostly, but this is a particular situation that we should probably pay a little more attention to. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
No, I appreciate that. And I would like for us to do something that enables us to learn from this class. Wasn't recommending that, throwing that out, but I would like for us to try and figure out how we can make sure in moving forward with a class, that it is in fact achieving the goals that we wanted to. Councilmember Cesar.
I just wanted to catch the last part of the conversation here. What I'd heard earlier from the manager was that he was going to consult with us and think about when the budget amendment was ripe. Then, at the end of the conversation, it sounded like y'all were confirming that the budget amendment is coming in two weeks. I just want to understand what the path moving forward is.
What I was asking for was the, what I thought was consistent, where we would have the ability to be able to do it, but we're not necessarily doing it. I've asked for a recommendation as to whether and when we should do it. But having the ability to be able to do it on that timing is something that I would like to see us have. I don't know whether it's the right thing to do or not.
Okay, I just generally see it either as the manager's role to put it on the agenda when he recommends it or as the council's role to put it on the agenda if there's four members to put it on an agenda. And so if we're going to diverge from that process, I just want that to be explicit.
So let's talk about it. I mean, Ann asked the question, manager said, we're ready to do it this cycle. Guy asked the question what cycle meant and he said by the end, by the next meeting. So what's the procedure that we would follow then? I guess if the manager's not going to put it on the agenda, he has to give a sufficient notice so that somebody else has the ability to put it on the agenda if they want to, which means then we're looking for a recommendation from you, manager, sometime prior to, two weeks before the meeting. So as to give the council the opportunity to be able to respond. Does that work?
Yep, absolutely.
And in that context, it's just useful to know that that's the general timeline because I, you know, I and others, of course, kept our questions short today. And they're, you know, it's a report that we just got last night. So I think there's good reason for us to have further discussions to land on a timeline and place.
I was just trying to avoid us initiating that conversation at the end of the month, if in fact it's something that we would want to be able to do. Councilmember Alter.
So I wanted to just get clarity over when we would have the final report, which is supposed to be at the end of the month, which our meeting is like March?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third or twenty-fifth. So is that, I mean, would we even have the final report for when we would be voting?
I'll have to confirm with the consultants and with our staff and we can give you an updated memo on the timeframe.
Thank you. You know, broadly speaking, I favor us being able to move forward with an academy, as others have said, as soon as we are clear that we have material difference. We did just receive the report yesterday. This has been a process that the community has engaged with us. And I do believe that a little bit of time for folks to digest it, I'm not saying lots of extra time, but we do need to provide some time for folks to digest it and provide some feedback and thoughts moving forward. I would be comfortable with a special call meeting if we needed to that first week of April, if we can work it around Passover and Easter appropriately. I think the magnitude of what we're trying to do with this, being able to have it in a separate meeting where we can be very focused, there may be value to that. And that would just be something I would ask the city manager to consider as an option so that we can move forward with material changes, but also with the speed with which we need to in order to be able to move forward with the class, given the lead time. If that's necessary.
Those are good ideas, too. Colleagues, anything else on this topic? Okay, consultants, thank you all for the report and for the continued work. Thank you for your project lead on this work. Manager, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Two things to address before we would go back into.